Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Quiet, claps, worker, or gavel? Both of them work well, so thank you guys. Good evening. At this time, I'll call into open session the meeting of the AISD Board of Trustees on March 19th at 7:04 PM. I'll thank everyone for coming out to be with us this evening, especially our students right in front of me. We'll start in meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Ms. Solins in leading guys into the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Accept the students. Stay standing right there in front of me. At this time, would you please silence all cell phones, electronic devices, avoid disruptions around you? And if you would, please join me in a moment of silence. At this time, you can see from these lovely students in front of us, we're going to start with a student performance tonight. This is the Nichols Junior High School Choir, led by Mr. Greg Hoggan. Mr. Hoggan, please go right ahead, sir.
My shepherd makes me lie in fields of green, leads me in his eyes still waters. The Lord is my shepherd; who restores my love; leads me in the paths of righteousness; for the sake of the Lord's name. And even though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for you are with me; your rotten staff will comfort me. The Lord is my shepherd; nothing shall I want. My shepherd makes me lie in fields of green, leads me beside still waters. The Lord is my shepherd; who restores my love; leads me in the paths of righteousness; leads me in the paths for the sake of the Lord's name. You prepare a table before me in the presence of my enemies. You anoint my head with oil; Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life and in the house of my God. I will live forever. The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want.
Don't leave just yet, Mr. Hoggan. We'll let them get it. Let me brag on these students for just a second. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you for that. It was beautiful. So let me talk about the Nichols Junior High School Mustang Corral. The Nichols Junior High Choir Department consists of five performing and competing choirs, beginning boys, beginning girls, advanced boys, advanced girls, and a mixed choir made up of the top boys and girls. The mixed choir is here before you tonight, as you can imagine. Nichols Junior High has a rich tradition, successful at UIL and area contests. In 2007, the Nichols Men Choir was invited to sing at the TMEA Conference in San Antonio, which, if you don't know, is a huge, huge honor. Congratulations. It's part of the great path of the wonderful choirs that lead up into Lamar, and we see where they start right here. So thank you so much to all the students. Mr. Hoggan, thank you for leading a wonderful group.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. And there's a lot of them. Full choir. Full choir tonight. We gotta get more space. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hoggan. Thank you so much again, sir. Next, moving to next item agenda, which is one of our favorite portions of the evening, is our Student of the Month. I see Mr. Benavides over there. In this month, we get a focus on a student from Sam Houston High School. So once a month, the district gets to choose one student from the entire district and focus on who's going to be our Student of the Month. And tonight is Sam Houston High School. And let me just say, I got a special note from Mr. Benavides today, and we saw some bios, and what amazing students. So this is a small portion. We'll read about everything this student's done. Tonight, we get to honor Diana Avila. Would you please come up?
Good evening.
Diana is a well-rounded student, a great example of what hard work and dedication can do for students. She's involved in her high school as well as her community, all while she maintains a job and runs on the track and field team. She's been involved in Avid for over six years, and she's taken many AP Advanced Placement classes, including four this year. She's a member of the National Spanish Honor Society, and she has given back to the community by participating in Glo- Glo- Global Youth Service Day and helping to organize a canned food drive. She also works to help support her family and recently earned the honor of a crew member of the quarter with her job at Raising Canes, after, which I know a ton of us go to. The best iced tea in town, just so you know. After attending an engineering summer camp for computer science at the University of Texas Arlington in 2012, she's decided to attend UTA in the fall and major in computer science. This is truly just a small portion of how amazing. So at this time, I'd love to say, congratulations, Diana. Is there anyone you'd like to introduce? Any words for us?
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you to everyone that's here today. It is a pleasure to be here. I actually was very surprised when I found out. I was very happy that, it's like, hard work pays off at the end of the day. I do want to say thank you to everyone, to my teachers, my parents are here. Especially, I want to shout out to my teachers, my coordinators, Ms. O'Brien. They've supported me every time. Sorry.
It's okay.
It's well deserved. We encourage it. It's good.
They always support me. They're always there, helping me out. Everything I need, I trust them. I can go up to them, talk to them, whatever is bothering me, whatever I'm facing at home, all my problems. And Avid has really... I've grown in Avid so much, I can't express enough how much I've grown. I don't regret being in Avid at all. And this year has been one of the toughest years in my life. My whole entire school year, taking four AP classes is not easy. There's a lot of work to it, a lot of time management that you have to do. It's not easy, having a job, you know, taking care of your brothers, doing your studies, you know, not having a social life, you know? This is very important to most of us. But to me, that's not what I'm really focusing on. I want to focus on my education first because that's the only way I can get my parents out from all the problems that we've been through. And I want to thank y'all too for being here, and it really means a lot.
If you wouldn't mind, and this may make you cry more, but I would ask Mr. Benavides, if you would, please come up. We exchanged some comments today, and I know more of your story, and it's truly, you're one of the most deserving students of the month, and we're so proud. Mr. Benavides, just a few words, please.
Oh, absolutely. No, just, you know, once a month, I meet with all the student leaders on campus, and Diana being the president of Avid, you know, we've had many discussions about how, ways to improve SAM and various things that our community and our students need. Diana is just an exceptional young lady. You know, her story is not unique to many of the students that we have at SAM, so I felt like she represents many of our students, the struggles that they go through. But again, the hard work, the dedication. She's a dreamer. She has gone through the process of DACA, and she helped me this year put on a DACA presentation for our community. We had over 200 community members there, and she was there helping to promote that. And now that, you know, she's been part of that program, she wants to help fulfill and help other students and community members obtain that same ability to, you know, step out of the shadows, work, and again, pursue her life in this country, that she's been here ever since she was three. So again, it's just, it was my privilege to honor her today. Like I said, she's an amazing young lady, and she's going to do some great things.
Perfect. Would you like to introduce the other folks in the audience that are crying with you? I think it's well deserved.
My parents, they're here. My family's here. They're in the pit row. My mother, she's Gabriela Hernandez. My brother, Steven Avila. My dad, Pedro Avila. And my little brother, Jacob Avila.
We're very proud of you, and as Mr. Benavides said, you are a dreamer, and the dreamer is the one. You mentioned in some letters, I saw that, you know, you have a harder time getting scholarships and those type of things. So you've got it right. You've got the right mindset, and we're so proud of you. You are the success story that we worked so hard for every single day, and we couldn't be more proud. So at this time, it's a small honor, but we'd like to come down and honor you and just say thank you for everything you've done. So just a second, we'll be down. Here's this, and congratulations. This is a work pen that we give out. Do you wear it? Do you put it on your shirt? Do you put it on your name bag? Do you put it on your bag? You can do whatever you want. Congratulations. It's my show. Sorry, man. shouldn't have in-state tuition, you'll be getting another email from me. Congratulations. Very proud. Next, we'll move to our Community Engaged for Excellence Award of Appreciation. I know that's hard to follow, but this is very, very well deserved. And tonight, we have the distinct honor of honoring the Arlington Public Library. And Carrie, would you please come up here to accept the award?
As we all know, it starts with reading and getting kids to the library, so it's a distinct honor of one of our great partners to honor you tonight as the Director of Libraries Accepting for the Arlington Public Library. So give me, if you would, just give me a minute or two to read this to everyone so they know what a valuable partnership this is. The Arlington Public Library directly supports Arlington AISD community by providing numerous learning opportunities across grade levels, from our three-year-old students in pre-K to our seniors in high school. For early learning students, the Arlington Public Library provides story times at 15 Arlington AISD community-based childcare centers. The program provides little library boxes of 20 titled books on a bi-weekly basis. Through the Early Learning Matters Parent Program, the APL educates AISD parents on their role in helping their children develop early literacy skills. The APL, Arlington Public Library, if you didn't know, provides a similar program, Life Through Literacy, for teen parents in AISD high schools. To further support early learning development, APL supports a public library field trip for pre-K 3 and pre-K 4 students at 32 Title I elementary schools. The Arlington Public Library continues to support the AISD programs and services such as Stories Start Children. It's a five-week session for parents where they write about their life experiences, pass on family and cultural traditions, and provide a window from the past to the future. The library tech link, a mobile computer lab, has stops at Sam Houston High School, Carter, and Workman Junior High Schools to provide computer classes to the parents. Through the library link at seven elementary schools, AISD students, teachers, and parents are able to access Arlington Public Library books and have them delivered directly to the school. In addition, the library has sponsored several Poetry Day events at seven elementary schools. For secondary-level students, the library has supported student participation in the North Texas Teen Book Festival, the Writing for Hollywood program, STEM field trips to the Northeast Library Branch and at UTA robotics classes, and the Teen Summer Reading Club Video Challenge for Workman Junior High students. During the school year, Go Center programming at the Northeast Branch allows students the opportunity to work with a mentor to foster a desire for higher education. This past summer, the Arlington Public Library and AISD partnered to offer Summer Reading Club to encourage children, teens, and adults to read throughout the vacation break. The library continues to connect with our community by supporting the Senior to Senior Program, where Sam Houston High School Honor Society students visit the Greenfield Retirement Living Residence and present intergenerational programs. With service and support, the Arlington Public Library is a critical learning tool to AISD. And if anyone thinks you're about, just about books, they're so far off on what you do. So at this time, it's our distinct honor to honor our Community Engaged for Excellence Lord to the Arlington Public Library. Carrie Sieg for accepting.
Carrie, few words and people you want to introduce?
Sure. Well, thank you so much, first, for those kind words and for this recognition, but especially for your partnership. I think sometimes we all tend to take community partnerships for granted. They seem like they just happen naturally, and they're easy. But partnerships are hard, and I think that our staffs have worked very hard, especially over this last decade, to build a good partnership. You have to learn about that organization that you're working with, what their wants and needs are, what their goals and strategies are. Sometimes you have to learn a whole new vocabulary just to be able to communicate on the same level. And then, you have to care about all that, and sometimes you have to compromise. And I'm pretty sure that over the last 10 years, there have been some times when, after a meeting, we've all gone back to our offices and slumped in somebody's chair and said, "That's really hard. Do I really have to do this?" And the answer in our library has always been, yes, you do, because it's not all about us, and it's certainly not about what's easy. What it's all about is doing the right thing for the kids and the families that we serve in our community. So on behalf of my entire staff, I'd like to thank you for your partnership in being able to do that. And I do have some folks with me here who do all that wonderful work that you were talking about previously. Library Services Managers, Yvonne Kiefer and Abby Dozier. Our Community Programming Librarian, David Jackson, who is everywhere in AISD. And our Literacy Coordinator, Wesley Young. And there are many others who wanted to be here with us tonight, Yoko Matsumoto especially, but she's been a partner in another way. She's at her kid's open house at Butler tonight, so, but she really wanted to be here. So again, thank you so much.
Congratulations. Thank you. We'd love to come down. We'd love to come down, honor you, and we can't wait to see the partnership grow as this new library is being built.
Yes, we're really looking forward to that.
So that is a tool that will make you guys even more effective, so it's amazing. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you guys so much for everything y'all did. Thank you. From a kid who went to libraries, a little kid as a whole, thank you so much. Thank you. Slide down. Next. Next, we'll consider administrative appointments. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg. I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the appointment of the individual discussed in closed session for Assistant Principal for Seguin High School, and appoint the individuals discussed in closed session for the principal of the Fine Arts Dual Language Academy at Corey, principal for Fine Arts Dual Language Academy at Rockmore, principal for Remensy Elementary, and Assistant Principal for Bailey Junior High.
This time, I accept a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Solins and a second by Mr. Baran. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees, present six trustees, voting affirmative. Mr. Hibbs is on a business trip this evening in terrible old New York City this time of year. So congratulations, Dr. Appointments. Please, Dr. Cavassos, please introduce our appointees.
Thank you, President Hogg. And first, I'd like to introduce the new principal for our Fine Arts Dual Language Academy at Corey Elementary, Dr. Matt Barnell. Dr. Barnell attended the University of Texas at Arlington and obtained his Bachelor of Music and Jazz Studies. University of Texas at Arlington for his Bachelor of Music in Music Education, Master of Education in Educational Leadership, his Doctor of Education and Leadership Policy and Studies, has been, most recently, the principal of Sherrod Elementary, has been an Assistant Principal at West, a director of bands, an assistant director of band at two different school districts. So Matt, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say?
Thanks, sir. President Hogg, Superintendent Cavassos, and board members, thank you so much for a fantastic opportunity. A lot of boards talk about innovation, but this board's actually taking action steps to achieve it, so congratulations to you. First, I would like to thank Mr. Howell and Ms. Hop. Are they here? Ms. Hop, thank you for your leadership, and Mr. Howell, I know you're out there somewhere. Thank you for yours. In this time, we really appreciate you, so congratulations to you. In fact, I would also like to thank Ms. Wileen George, is she here, for being the interim at Corey during this time. Thank you, Ms. George. I have already learned that Corey is an amazing community. It is an example of what happens when teachers, students, and parents work together to ensure success. I look forward to becoming a part of that tradition at Corey. It's a tradition of excellence, commitment, and of unity. What a great place to promote what we want to premier to look like. We're going to do something innovative, and we're going to do it in a premier way. Unfortunately, I have to say goodbye to my Sherrod family. Sherrod family has been an inspiration to me every day. Their work ethic and dedication are beyond teaching. They represent what love for kids looks like and what responsibility for ensuring success looks like. For the last three years, Sherrod family, you've inspired me to be better and to work harder, and I thank you for your commitment. I know that your next steps will lead to greater success, and I know that Ms. Moore, who's been our Dean of Instruction this year, is going to be a wonderful leader to continue that until we have a solution. So I just can't thank you enough, Sherrod people, for all of the work and the effort that you put in every day. Congratulations to you, and thank you for your faith and confidence. Sherrod will continue to do well. I want to thank Dr. Harbrick for her guidance the last three years. I am grateful... Where is Dr. Harbrick? Is she here? Okay. I want to thank her for her leadership and for her counsel and wisdom. I wouldn't be where I am without her mentorship. Also have to thank the boss. My wife, Julie, and my son, Riley, are here tonight, so thank you guys for coming. I have, I had a beautiful opportunity when I was a high school student to meet Dean Corey. And Dean Corey was playing a beautiful flute solo, and I was trying not to get in his way, and he was a man of great dignity and wisdom. I know he would be proud of what Corey is doing today, and I know he'd be proud of their commitment to excellence, the commitment to developing well-rounded students, and to my new family at Corey. I look forward to trying to live up to your expectations, and I can't wait to grow with you and learn from you. So thank you all very much.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new principal for the Fine Arts Dual Language Academy at Rockmore, Ms. Katuska Erador. Katuska attended Texas A&amp;M University, College Station, and obtained her Bachelor of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies. University of Texas at Arlington for a Master in Education in Curriculum and Instruction. Most recently, a principal in Irving, has been an Assistant Principal, has been an instructional specialist, and a bilingual third-grade teacher. Katuska, congratulations and welcome to Arlington. Anything you'd like to say?
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President Hogg, Superintendent Dr. Cavassos, and esteemed board members and guests. I would like to first thank you for this very warm welcome. It's quite surprising. I'm honored to have the, been given the opportunity to join the Arlington AISD team. It's an exciting time. It's obvious it's an exciting time for this community due to all the exciting and wonderful innovative things. innovative things that are happening here, and I'm just glad to be a part of it. I know that there's strong leadership here with a strong vision, and it's inspiring. Opening a new Fine Arts Dual Language Academy, a school like no other, will have its challenges, but I am certain that we can provide an exciting, enriching, and creative environment for the students. I promise to lead with passion, integrity, and I will always have our best, our students' best interests and needs in mind as we make decisions and move forward in this journey at Rockmore. I look forward to working with the team of leaders here. So, thank you, Dr. Cavassos, and Dr. Wertz, and Dr. Habrick for having trust and confidence in me. I don't want to let you down. Dr. Wertz, I hope you know how grateful I am to know you all these years and to learn from you and have you as a mentor. Thank you for reaching out to me. You've always expected nothing less than my very best, and I promise that's what I'll bring here too. And thank you for the opportunity to allow me to introduce my daughters, who are the cutest and the smartest little girls. My dear Graciela, Mariela, we're here. And Graciela's a third grader, and Mariela's a kindergarten. They bring me so much joy. I'm very proud of them. They're proud of me too. They drive me. They absolutely drive me, and I want to offer them the best and brightest future, and I think that's what will happen at Rockmore. They're a little excited and nervous about this change in a new school, just like their mom, but we're going to get through there. And although my parents are not here, they're watching online, so hi, Mom and Dad. I want to thank them for the endless support and encouragement. My mom is also an educator, and she instilled the value and power that education has. She brought my sister and I to the United States from Venezuela at a very young age without knowing what would happen, without knowing the English language, but she did know that there was going to be a better education and future for us here. So, I just want to thank her for all that she's done and all the sacrifices that she's made. She is one that's always told me to take opportunities that come your way, because you never know when the next one will be here. So, I couldn't pass up this opportunity here in Arlington to be the new principal at the Fine Arts Dual Language Academy at Rockmore, and I want to thank my mom for encouraging me. So, again, thank you for this opportunity and this warm welcome. I look forward to working with all of you and meeting the staff at Rockmore. Thank you.
There's a reception afterwards. Next, I'd like to introduce the new principal of Remensy Elementary, and that is Ms. Selena Osuna. Well, Selena attended Texas Tech University and obtained her Bachelor of Arts in Spanish, Southern Methodist University, to obtain her Master of Education in Bilingual Education. Most recently, the Assistant Principal at Remensy Elementary School, has taught math and has taught dual language, has been a dual-language first-grade teacher, second-grade teacher, and a bilingual kindergarten teacher. Selena, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. President Hogg, our esteemed Board Members, Dr. Cavassos, thank you so much for this opportunity to be here today. Thank you for this opportunity to be able to continue to serve at Remensy Elementary. I am so excited to continue, and I'm just so excited to... The staff is here. I'm so excited about everything. I would like to take a moment to introduce you to my family, and you've probably heard them this entire time, so I do apologize for that. But I have two little ones, so they, you know, it's a little hard to keep them entertained. But I'd like to introduce you to my husband, Arturo, who's back there, with my daughter, Sophia. And my son, Arturo, who's back there. And I talk about them a whole lot, so... And I too believe my kids are the cutest too, right? Right? But I'd like to also introduce you to my mother-in-law, who is here helping with the children as well. But like I said, please forgive my daughter if she decides to kind of run around and make noise and everything, but I want to take this time to thank my husband, Arturo. He helps keep everything running smoothly. I don't know what I would do without my husband. He happened to pick the kids' outfits today, just so y'all know. But, you know, I just... Arturo, thank you so much for...
We have Kleenex to the left.
I said I wasn't going to cry through this, so...
It's okay.
Thank you for believing in me, baby. I love you. I had more stuff to say, but I would get emotional, but thank you, baby, for believing in me. You always challenge me, you always push me, and you always tell me, "Go for it. Just do it." So, I really appreciate that. You know, I think a time like this is really important to, of course, thank my mom, my parents. My mom lives in Corpus Christi. She couldn't be here today, but she's watching online, so I want to thank my mom in Corpus and my brother and my family in Corpus Christi, thank you for always believing in me as well. And of course, my in-laws, because I don't know what I would do without them. They watch my children, so they help keep everything running as well. You know, it does take a lot, it takes a village, right, to raise the children? So, thank you for everything. I also want to take this time to thank my mentors in education. My former principals that I've worked under, Brian Byrd, Judy Meyer, Stacy Kimbrel. I'm very fortunate to have one of my best mentors here, Elizabeth Vazquez. Thank you for teaching me to lead with heart. You know who I'm going to talk about now, right? I also want to say thank you to Matt Brown. It has been awesome working with Matt for three years, and he knows I'm the crybaby, so he knew this was coming. But thank you, Matt. It's been a great three years working together. Don't know where you are. But thank you so much, Matt. I'm so lucky to call you a mentor, my colleague, my friend. You pushed me to be the best leader that I can be, and thank you for taking a chance on me a couple of years ago to be the Assistant Principal at Remensy. Like I said, you inspire me every day to be that great leader, so thank you so much. Also, finally, my staff. The staff, I'm so lucky that I get to continue on our campus. I'm so lucky and excited that I get to continue working with the Remensy student staff and the community. If y'all didn't know, we have the best staff in AISD. So, I promise to also lead with heart. I promise to continue the success that we've had. I'm so excited to continue going on with y'all, and let's do this. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Seguin High School, Mr. Anthony Terrell. Anthony has received his Bachelor of Arts in Business Studies from Houston-Tulson University, University of North Texas Denton, for his Master of Arts in Educational Administration. Most recently, an Assistant Principal in Dallas ISD, has been a principal in residency in an elementary school, and has taught special education. Anthony, congratulations. Welcome to Arlington. Anything you'd like to say?
Yes, sir. Thank you. To President Hogg and esteemed members of the school board here, Dr. Cavassos, and also Mr. Nix, the principal at Once again High School, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to come and join the first-class organization, which is Arlington ISD. I am honored to be given the opportunity to serve as Assistant Principal alongside Mr. Nix at Once again High School. I'm extremely excited to help motivate and inspire our students to achieve at the highest levels. At Seguin High School, we are committed to being a premier learning institution that prepares its students to excel in higher education, career opportunities, and also community service. I'm also excited to contribute to the vision of Dr. Cavassos and all the community contributors to the strategic plan of Arlington ISD. In my opinion, the most innovative, inspiring plan that has been produced by a school district that I've studied and internalized. As an administrator in AISD, I'm committed to sustaining the AISD tradition of academic excellence, professionalism, that the district is well-known for. I'm also committed to our mission to become a globally recognized school district. I would also like to thank my wife, Ms. Tamara Terrell. She was staying. I think we have a little competition here. I think I have the cutest baby. But she's sleeping right now. If anyone wants to meet her, meet us over there. Also, to Mr. Nix, I'd like to thank him for being a great and inspiring leader. Mr. Brian Byrd, and all the other leaders on the campus at Once again High School. That would be Mr. Humes, Ms. Wesco, Mr. Lofton, and Ms. Simmons. Lastly, well, not lastly, but my good friend and mentor, Dr. John Brooks, who's over the Educational Leadership Department of the University of North Texas. Lastly, I would like to thank my mother, who inspired me. She pushed education from the time, early as I can remember, and she... All of her kids graduated from college, and I think that's a great feat for a single mother. And lastly, my father, Mr. Oscar L. Terrell. Thank you.
Last, but certainly not least, it's my pleasure to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Bailey Junior High School, Mr. Tommy Moore. Tommy attended Texas Wesleyan University, obtained his Bachelor of Science in Physical Education, Texas Wesleyan University, or his Master of Science in Education, and his Master of Education from the University of Texas at Arlington for Leadership Policy Studies. Most recently, Tommy has been a varsity football coach and biology teacher at Arlington High School.
Hey, you get one cry, and they all start crying, so...
It will continue.
We're okay with crying babies. You don't have to totally... We're okay.
Tommy has also taught and coached at Lamar High School, has been a Chief Financial Officer in the business, and has also taught as a graduate assistant in the baseball program. And so, Tommy, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say?
Yes, sir. Thank you. President Hogg, Board Members, Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to apologize in advance, because I got so many emotions inside.
There's tissues right there, Mr. Moore.
Yeah. Yeah, Anthony kind of let me down. I mean, he was telling me he was a crier, and I was thinking, "Great, I mean, I'm after him," and he held it all together, and I thought, "Damn gum." So, I just have, I've just got so many just emotions inside. I'm just so very excited about this opportunity, and I appreciate y'all having the faith in me to be able to do this job. I also want to thank Ms. Wilmeth, Ms. Benavides, and the committee at Bailey. Thank you. Thank you very much. This is my 18th year in the classroom and as a teacher and a coach, and I would be, it would probably be impossible for me to go through the list of people that have influenced me and put me in this position. I've been very, very fortunate of working for some really, really great people during my lifetime, and I guarantee you, I wouldn't be here if it weren't for them. And so, I hope they know who they are, but I thank each and every one of them. Bailey's a special place to me. When I walked in there for the interview, there were 13 of them standing there looking at me, and when I walked in there, you know, eight or nine of them I knew from my kids having gone through there. My wife was a PTA president there for two years, and I was on the PTA board as well, okay? So, always voted with her. But at that moment, I realized, and it brought back the memories of how special a place that is, and how excited I am about going back and contributing to such a great place. And again, with my kids having gone through there, and I know the faculty, I know how they feel about kids, and I know they do what's best for kids, and just having spent just a little bit of time one-on-one with Ms. Benavides and listening to her talk about her passion, about her staff, about the way she feels about kids, I'm just so very excited to become a part of that team. My family's been here for a long time. My, I think since the '30s, we were here. I mean, my kids, I think, depending who you talk to, they're fourth or fifth-generation colts. So, we've been here for a long, long time. And I have roots here. I live less than a mile from Bailey, and that's just, I know that community, and I'm very, very excited to continue being involved with it. But I couldn't, this is the emotional part. I definitely wouldn't be standing here if it weren't for those three people right over there. My wife has, through 18 years of coaching, has really, really put up with a lot of long, long, long nights and weekends of me being away. And, you know, she's always been there for me. She's been more than I could ever imagine as a supporter for me. And my two kids, I love them to death. So, I've got so much of my family here. My mom, who's been an educator for 30 years, my mother-in-law, my brother-in-law, sister-in-law, my father-in-law's back there. So, I've got a whole bunch of people here that are just behind me all the time, and so I'm very, very thankful for this opportunity, and I'm very, very excited about getting my start at Bailey Junior High. Thank y'all very much.
Good appointments, Dr. Cavassos. Lots of tears and sets of the cutest kids in the world. Now, I would have to counter, because we do have an eight-month-old. Mr. Moore and I talked about this last night, you know? I've got an eight-month-old, so... And because I get last word, cutest kid in the world, so it's her birthday tonight, her eight-month birthday. I didn't realize you had to celebrate every month for their first year. I'm getting used to that. Congratulations to all of our appointees. This is our custom. If you would, please follow Mr. Cale out to the lobby. We'd like to have a short reception to greet you. If everyone would, please let the Board Members go first so that we can come back in and conduct our business for the evening. We will take a brief break and be back at approximately 8:10. This evening, if Dr. Reich will come in here when he gets a chance, we'll go ahead and get started. Next, we'll move to discussion, we'll move to open forum for agenda items. We do not have any cards for open forum for agenda items, so next, we'll move to discussion action item. A, consider the schem- A, consider the schematic design for classroom addition at Workman Junior High. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg. And as part of our strategic plan, and our facility assessment, and eventually our bond, and now our implementation, Workman Junior High Classroom Addition is something that we're bringing in terms of the schematic design for board consideration. I'll turn that over to Cindy.
Evening, President Hogg, board members, Dr. Cavassos. These really are great times, exciting times here in our district, and I have to tell you that these presentations on schematic designs are something that we are very excited about and love to bring to you. So, tonight, we are going to present to you the schematic design for the Workman Classroom Addition. As Dr. Cavassos just mentioned, one of the goals in our strategic plan was that the school district would be the leader in the education marketplace by providing world-class facilities while being physically responsible. And also, as Dr. Cavassos mentioned, we started the entire process with a complete facility assessment and a look at how we utilize our spaces and our buildings, and what best opportunities we had to maximize that utilization. And so, tonight is the product of some of that work. In our 2014 bond program, which was the outcome of the facility assessment and planning work we did a year ago, there is a project to add classrooms to Workman Junior High School. We'll add 16 classrooms to that building, and that will allow us to consolidate the student bodies of Hutchison and Workman, and allow us to more fully utilize our junior high facilities across the district. Included with this is a 16-classroom addition, a cafeteria expansion, and new administration area, and a very pronounced new, dramatic new entry to the school. We also, as part of the construction work, will address the deficiency, deficiencies that were identified through the facility assessment, as well as life cycle replacements, such as equipment that is at the end of its life and needs to be replaced. All of that was built into the bond package, and that's built into this project. So, the total new square feet added to the building will be about 31,000 square feet. So, we have been working with BRW Architects to design the project, and with the schematic design that we're going to present to you this evening, it represents the planning work to this point, the work between the owner and the architect to identify the programming that will take place in the building, the kinds of space we need, the spatial relationships. So, then you turn all that information over to the architects, and they work their magic, and they bring back the schematic design. So, from here, from this point, they will continue on, and they'll explain this too, to refine the designs through design development and on to construction documents, and then we'll actually put these out for bid. The construction management firm for this project is Pogue, and so, we have just thoroughly enjoyed working with BRW on this project. So, we have with us this evening Lisa Lampkin, who's the principal with BRW Architects, and Ann Hildebrand, who's the director, and I'm going to turn this over to them and let them make the presentation. We'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Lampkin, and really, on behalf of BRW, I want to thank you once again for just this wonderful opportunity. It's great to be part of the transformation of Workman Junior High. My goodness, how many years it's been around, and it's going to be, have a whole new look, truly. And really want to thank you for the joyous process. You have an awesome facilities team, truly, and it's been a really joyous process. Let's think about the context for a minute. You know, originally constructed as a high school in 1973, we all know that, and, you know, transformed again, repurposed as a junior high in the early '80s. Schools were different back then, right? Very solid construction, but very inward-facing. It's not what schools look like today, a very inward-focused, limited daylight, you know, really lack of modern security. So, we look at those as opportunities to think about when we have this program to overlay. So, a little bit of context, we all know this school, but to remind ourselves, of course, the core classroom area here, the cafeteria and loading dock area, the athletics, the auditorium, and music classrooms. Here, an interestingly formal entry that no one has ever used. My sister graduated from high school here. She never remembers anyone using that door. And a functional entry here that is not nearly the kind of approach we want our kids to have to enter an exciting time in junior high. And also, some security challenges from a safety standpoint because of how the circulation works. So, we have some great opportunities, not only because of the program for the classrooms, but the condition of the parking lot is they're asking us to redo that parking lot. Great opportunity to fix how the circulation works, and we'll talk about that in detail when we get to the site plan. But really wanted you to see here how important this collector, pedestrian collector is for how the walking circulation can be, so that we keep buses and cars separate from the kids as we approach the entry. Of course, earlier in the year, you considered the elementary school that could be on-site. We also collaborated with the architect for the elementary school and a traffic management consultant to make sure that traffic's working correctly together. And we're working all as one family on this site, right? Let's see what else. You know, and really, when we looked at where to place the addition, we wanted to look at the resources we had and see how that program could transform. So, here, we're thinking about putting the addition here. Not only is it the optimum building site in terms of the area, gives us the opportunity to transform visually that strange entry that needs to go away, really functionally, and also gives us, you know, from a short-term standpoint, a great opportunity to keep construction that's going to be going on all year, separate from what the kids are doing on the other side of the school. All right? The other opportunity we have, you know, is really to transform its image as we all approach the school here, where we're going to be able to change what it looks like anyway. So, Ann, if you would review the schedule a bit and tell us about that.
So, the classroom addition that would be facing Arbuthack, it's a 16-classroom addition, and it will be complete for the fall semester of 2016. We're going to complete our construction documents that will go out to bid with our C-MAR already in place, and that will be June 11th. And then, we'll be back here for the board approval on August 6th. And in addition to that classroom addition, we will be doing a dining renovation, slightly enlarging the dining space with that anticipation of the consolidation of the junior high schools. And that has a slightly different schedule, because it's going to be complete for the fall of 2015. So, the construction will go on the summer there, and we're going to complete our construction documents of that space, just that space, August 16th. And then, you have your construction manager already in place for these two construction phases to start.
So, let's look at the site in a little bit more detail. Again, the elementary, the existing Workman. Off of Center Street, we've got bus traffic. So, here, buses are going to loop in, with some parking here. So, that'll be separate from all the parent arrival. We'll be coming in here with parent drop-off and flowing back out, or you'll be able to come in through here and drop off as well. So, completely separate from the elementary school traffic. And all the elementary school traffic has been coordinated to come off a volunteer drive, and also staggered start times. So, should work out really well. Again, the proposed addition on the East Arbuthack side, a new transformation of the entry, and pedestrian plaza, so the, both walking students can collect, and the kids dropped off by bus or car. Okay? Let's zoom in a little bit. See that a little closer? So, again, the pedestrians, the addition. Any questions about the site?
Yeah, Ms. Penney, go right ahead.
Okay. Myself and Keisha and John Hibbs are on the committee, the facilities committee for the site. So, we already had the opportunity to ask a lot of questions, and the things that I thought that I would ask now, because we were on the phone a good two hours with the questions that we had, and I just wanted to mention them so that the rest of the board knows these were the questions we asked. In particular, I remember saying, this is a Jamie Solins question, and so, I asked it on her behalf. It's pretty good when you work as a team, and you know what the interests are, particularly to other individuals. And the one was, and I think Cindy answered this question, and it was the temporaries. How long were the, if these were truly temporaries that were going to be on this site, or were they permanent temporaries? And I was assured that these were going to be utilized so that the students would be placed in the temporaries while the construction was being done in the area that was going to accommodate the students. Is that correct, Cindy? And the other question on a temporary was the JPS temporary. What were we going to do with that? And I don't think that had been determined at this point. It was moving to another site, it's just not going to be on the Workman site. So, that was one of the things. So, I'm answering my own questions, because I've already asked them, but I wanted to make sure that the rest of the board members knew. You talked about the traffic flow study. One of the questions that I had was, did we also work with the traffic study with the city on the hotel that's going to be built near that site? Because that's going to impact the traffic flow to and from the school, both schools, the elementary school and the junior high. I don't think that we had done that at that point. Had we, Cindy?
Yeah, the traffic study, we've just gotten back, and I think Lisa and then have seen that even before we have, so I'll let them address that. But that is something the city requires us to do as the owner, and so, we have worked with a traffic engineer, and they've completed that, so.
And it does look at, yeah, it is not a, you know, a forecast of what's going to happen for the next 20 years in Arlington, but it does look at the broad area, the fact that Center Street is absolutely planned to, you know, connect to the south. So, it does look at those issues.
Well, this hotel in particular was going to be built, is going to be built on Arbuthack, down further, closer to Collins Street. And the concern that I know that the city had was that we, if we have a plan that addresses the needs of our schools, and then that site is built, then it will also impact the traffic flow for our schools. So, they had asked that we work together with them to determine what would be the best benefit, so they could make a solution one time, instead of having to go back and address it and change traffic.
So, as we go forward and further coordinate with the city, we'll make sure we address that.
Okay. And then, we talked about the joint parking, so that each one of the schools could use the other school's parking at the, as coordinated by those schools. Correct, Cindy?
Yes.
Okay. And then, Keisha had one other question if you want to ask about the sidewalks. Okay, you want to address that with them?
Sure.
So, they know.
Yeah. One other question we had, and I think you were going to look into it, was just to make sure that there was a sidewalk or something that would be a constant paved walkway for any students that would have to cross Collins and continue that walk through Center.
Yeah. And there is a sidewalk all the way around that site, the Workman property. Entirely encircles the property already, so.
Thank you. And I just wanted to let the board know, those were particular questions that we had already asked and were a concern, and as we go along, as you go on further, if we come up with some other things that the board would like to know, we've already asked these questions in committee. So, we were fully aware of what was happening. That was a very long conversation, but a very good one.
Excellent. Well, absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Penney. I know you guys will reveal more as we start going through this. Let me just ask one question. It is about the schedule that we just addressed on that, and I may have just missed it, so I apologize for that. On the dining renovation, with that finishing in 2015, that's all being bid out with the same construction manager at risk, correct? It's one bid to go out those two projects with two ending dates.
And that's a big advantage of construction manager being on board, part of the team right now.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure it was one consistent project going through with two finish dates on that. Thank you.
So, moving in, just to orientate all the things happening at school. As Ann mentioned, a dining expansion, a little bit of renovation to remove existing lockers, of course, the primary 16-classroom addition here to the south, an addition to create the appropriate entry, both shelter and security, and appropriate administration space downstairs. Switching to the second floor, of course, just the addition again on the second floor. Zooming in a little bit, so we can all see it better. Again, at level one at the addition, we have a really neat opportunity, get rid of those front doors, and instead, the school can flow right into the addition through that portal. We've got seven standard core classrooms, a science classroom that has some nice access to immediately outside, an extended learning area. This is going to be a 21st century school. It's not about 1973 anymore, and giving the teachers different kinds of facilities to teach different kinds of ways. That, right next door is important teacher-workroom area, so they have the restrooms and preparation facilities as well that they need. And here, a small group conference area that really is another important flexible space in the program. Upstairs, we just mirror that same program again to total the 16 classrooms. Here, just a modest renovation here to get access into the addition and a smooth circulation.
And it also includes two new science labs, which are there in the darker green.
And then, looking at the administration, one of the things that wasn't as important in 1973 was where the administration was. So, removing the principal's office downstairs where they need to be at the front door of the school, an important, a secure vestibule flowing into the right-sized reception, and principal support, and staff restrooms, a conference room and a registrar. And the remaining administrative functions staying where they're housed upstairs. And here, the dining renovation.
So, for the dining room, we're slightly enlarging it using some adjacent spaces, totaling three classrooms, two on one side and one on the other, to give them more dining to house this consolidated student population that will be there in the fall. And as Lisa said, on that first floor, to give them some additional dining area or different flex space, we'll be removing the lockers. There's four groupings of lockers in the corridor, in the open corridor that we'll remove as well.
And so, here, we have a new way of looking at, go ahead.
Yeah, Dr. Reich, please go right ahead.
If we could go back to that, on the dining space, I just wanted to clarify, the, I think the current lunch schedule is probably two different lunches. Is that going to be the same in the new model? Do you know? I'm just asking as far as capacity.
I'm not sure it's been confirmed, but I believe they're going to add different periods.
So, right now, it has three serving lines, and that would be way too many lunches if we stayed with three serving lines. So, that's what these are indicating. We're refining, we're working with food service to identify the exact configuration, but we're going to add two additional serving lines, and so that in concert, with more space to seat kids, we can have fewer lunches than we would otherwise.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Without further ado, a new front door. Really, you know, it gives you a whole new face. You're no longer coming into the back of the school. And kind of swinging around, viewing from the Arbuthack side, you're going to have the bird's-eye view of what our new front door will look like. you're going to have the bird's eye view of what our new front door will look like. And, you know, a new transformative. Workman Junior High isn't Workman Junior High for the 20th century anymore. It's for the 21st century. Any questions?
Mr. Barron?
Thank you, President Hogg. Would you look at the classroom addition slide, please? That's good. There are no storage areas anywhere other than the science lab. Is that normal?
It is, well, schools need storage, absolutely. In looking what we had and what we needed, all of the storage ended up in the existing building.
Bookrooms and that sort of thing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's it.
Ms. Mays?
Maybe a Cindy question. But back towards the front, when we were looking at the temporary portables, it looks like there's one that's sitting on the existing tennis court. Cindy?
Yeah. So down here on the far east end is where we have portable buildings. And we will move some additional temporary buildings there, and they are temporary, to house students until the construction is completed. But it's not sitting on a tennis court at the moment.
Okay, because on here, it's showing temporary portables. And it has one in the grass and one sitting on the existing tennis court. Which would be the one all the way to the right, over here.
It's over to the right.
That's the tennis court.
And I think for this drawing, we showed what the max, how we could maximize. And we're thinking we're still studying how many we're going to be needing.
I think we're planning to move nine in there. We've got three there now. And they will be very, very temporary.
But not on the tennis courts or will we place one on?
I don't believe, I don't believe we would place one on a tennis court, no.
And if you total nine, you would end up, and if indeed we're needing nine, there's three, there's three, and there's three. And these were the, if we got nowhere else and we have to have two more, this is where they would go.
And Ms. Mays, I think currently those are not active tennis courts because remember, this is a old Bowie High School. So there's more than enough, if I remember correctly, of that location from where they are. I don't think they're alive. Is that right, Mr. Plouffe?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There are plenty of tennis courts there, more than, more than adequate.
Right. Okay. Perfect, thank you.
I'm sorry. So can I just get clarity that you're saying there's more than enough? So if we needed to put a portable on the, on one of the existing courts, that we would be okay? Or we don't use the courts at all? So you're saying it would be okay, which one?
No, to give clarity to the question, the answer to the question is that we are, we are in the planning stages of putting in the portables. And there will be a total of nine additional portables with the three portables that are there. The portable locations that is shown graphically here is not an actual representation of where that portable will be physically located. Our goal is to, every portable that we place is to put them as close as we can to the existing facility so that we can have students as a transition from bell schedules to get closer into the building. So their physical location is not graphically represented here. We're working with the portable mover and with our maintenance staff to ensure that we put these portables in that location. So the answer to your question is, no, we are not planning on putting a portable on that tennis court at this time.
Okay. So if the time does come, will we know before the portable's replaced on the tennis courts?
Absolutely, you will know. But there is adequate spacing that we have within that area.
Which is why I asked the question, because it shows that it was going to be on there. And it looked like there was plenty of grass.
Correct. We haven't, we, we are, we are working internally on the portable placement. And that is not something that the architect is working on. That's something that we'll do internally. Because we're physically moving portables from our existing facilities. And we'll have them in place prior to the start of the new school year. And so, again, we will place them at the locations that are closest to the campus to allow the students with the bell schedule to, to move from class to class.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dr. Hogg?
Yeah. Ms. Mays, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Barron?
To stay with the portables for just a minute. Which students will use the portables? Will, will the same students be in the portables all year? Or will it be, depend on what part of the building is being worked on? The kids from that part of the building will be in the portables?
We are in the, about ready to engage in the next step of design. And we'll make sure we work with the principal and the construction. Again, another benefit of construction manager being on board. We can talk through all of that and make sure the construction trailer is nowhere near the portables and so on. In the, in the next six weeks or so, we'll be confirming all that.
We'll have a class schedule. We'll have certain courses that are assigned, certain teachers that are assigned to temporary buildings. And as we've already noted, most of the, the construction work is going to take place out front of the main building. There will be work that takes place on the deficiency improvements and life cycle replacements. We may have to use that some as swing space. So it depends on which course you're in. And if it's a semester course or a year-long course. And, and there may be some swing of students as the year goes along to accommodate the construction.
Okay, thanks. Get a little clarification on that?
Yeah, go right ahead, Dr. Rasch.
So with our nine portables maximum, so that's 18 classrooms essentially? That approximately that?
There are three already there. We're going to move nine in.
Okay. Okay. So an additional 18 classrooms essentially will be moved from inside the building to house in the temporary structures.
Yeah, and keep in mind, you know, the newcomer center currently is located at Workman. They will move. And so that frees up some space in the building. And so we're moving temporaries there, plus we gained space once newcomer moves also inside the building.
Okay. So we may not need a full 18 classrooms in portable buildings, is what you're saying?
We may not. And again, it goes back to the phasing of the, right, of the construction too.
Okay, okay. Yeah, go ahead.
So the bottom line, Cindy, is this does not depict at all how many temporaries we will have.
Right.
Because you, you said we are going to move nine in and we already have three in place. But here, it only reflects the nine plus two.
Right. And so the purpose of this drawing is the schematic of the building.
Right.
And not supposed to represent the temporary buildings that are there just to accommodate the construction. And so, and as Mr. Fernandez mentioned just a second ago, we're working on the placement of the temporary buildings. And that's something that's really outside the scope of what the architects are doing.
Well, and it's good that you let us know because Jamie would be very upset. I'm speaking for Jamie again.
Thank you, Ms. Penney. I think, I think the key on this is the word temporary.
Very much so.
We can tolerate temporaries for a year or two during construction. I watched Klein High School be completely rebuilt. And half their school was in temporaries for two years. And the parents loved it. They thought it worked really well. It's what they voted for. While half the schools out there was very innovative design. And so I think the key, and I tell my colleagues, I don't like temporaries as much as you guys. But I think the key word we heard from this pal is it's temporary. Not a permanent portable, but a temporary portable. So as long as we have assurance during construction, they can be used, but then they will be removed. That is, that is a goal. Ms. Solins?
Thank you, President Hogg. What a beautiful design. So many years we have wondered and wished that we could do these kinds of things. And it's, it's wonderful to see this come together that, to best serve students at the Workman site. So I'm very pleased that we are at this stage and things are moving from ideas to reality. So thank you for your work here. I do have a few questions. And, and thank you for anticipating my temporary questions, everyone. But I will say in this case, I certainly support the use of temporary buildings. This is exactly what they're for, for a temporary, to adapt to changing student needs. And so this is, I appreciate you, you thinking of me because I do talk about them quite a bit. But let's move to the kitchen. The, you've expanded the dining space, but I don't believe there's an expansion to the kitchen. So the kitchen is adequately sized for food service. I know it's, sometimes in the past, we've expanded a dining room, but not the food prep kitchen area. Just want to make sure that we're doing it all at the same, getting it all right-sized at the same time.
And that was part of the program that was?
There's two kiosks, serving kiosks being added to the dining area.
I'm thinking specifically of the, of the food preparation area. Ms. Powell?
There are three serving lines there. We're adding two lines into the space. And so we've worked with food service on this. And they, they believe that they can make the configuration work so that it is sufficient. And then, as we mentioned just now, there are also a couple of kiosks to serve from. But in terms of the prep kitchen, we are adding two lines back there.
But I understand the kiosk and how the line flow will be adjusted. And so that, that's.
And also, food service is purchasing several pieces of equipment in addition just to the serving lines to place there.
Right. I remember in particular, some years back, the Arlington High dining had a really small kitchen. And I just want to make sure if there's any, make sure that we take into consideration. I'm sure you maybe already have, but I want to just verify that we have done that.
And food service has been involved. And like I said, they are purchasing several pieces of equipment and moving two serving lines over there. So they believe that there's adequate space for that.
Very good, very good. Then my second question, we've all maybe remodeled homes or been in buildings that have had significant remodel or renovation. Since sometimes when you walk into the building, you say, well, here's the new part and there's the existing part. And it becomes a very clear demarcation line in terms of ceilings and walls and so forth. How, how might the inside of the building look once we're finished between the existing construction and the new construction?
Well, we are definitely concentrating our dollars where they're going to have the most impact to get 16 new classrooms and a new front door. And so going through and, you know, painting the entire school and so on would be outside of this scope. It is, you know.
I think with the deficiency dollars that are there for deficiency improvements, we are making some improvements on ceiling tiles. And in the new lobby area, I think there's mostly cosmetic improvements that are being made there. Paint, flooring, ceiling tiles there as well. And so we are trying to concentrate dollars, obviously, on the new classroom addition. But there are dollars in the deficiency portion of the budget to address ceiling tiles in particular.
And I tell you, ceiling tiles in particular are something you really notice when you walk through. And there's a new, and then the next, the next part. And so that, so that there'd be some continuity there. I know sometimes the materials, we're not going to rebuild the entire school. But to the extent that you don't have a plug-and-play building so that it has some blending throughout. And then with the facilities work we've done earlier, so we'll have enough to cover the other deficiencies. That's great. That is, that's my questions for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Solins. Ms. Penney?
Do you have any other blinking lights?
We've got one more, Dr. Rasch.
I'll let him talk to you because I'm going to make a recommendation by committee.
Awesome. Dr. Rasch?
Thank you, President Hogg. Just to add a little bit on from Ms. Solins' comments with the existing structure, two things. One, for the, the space for auditorium, that type of thing. Was that determined to be adequate with the increased capacity? Because I don't see any adjustment for that.
The, the program overlay did not show that there was a big disparity. And remember, it used to be a high school.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. So that additional capacity is already there, is what you're saying? Okay. And then I guess that would answer my second question, which was the, the flow of the hallways, constrictive doorways of old building construction versus wider hallways or more wider entries in hall passages and that kind of thing?
We did study that and made sure that all the hallways are wide enough. Actually, in this building, they're very generous, the hallways.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then the final question that I have, and I think it's great design. Thank you for all the work on it. I really appreciate it. Appreciate committee putting all the time into it too. With the, the front-facing Arbuthnot, if we could go to that last rendition. Yeah. It's different than what I have in the hard copy here. Is that the Arbuthnot side?
Yes.
Shouldn't be different.
That's the, turn it one more.
One more page?
No, we don't have one.
Interesting. Okay, apologize for that.
Well, I, you have it?
No, that's the.
No, that's not the, that's the entry.
No, that's one of them.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll get you the last page. But it is the same view. The one that you have is the bird's eye view. And then this is the same side of the building just from the street.
Okay, so I guess that's, that's good enough. So those, so that would be Arbuthnot right there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
When if we, you know, there may.
I guess the aerial makes it look like there's a much greater distance between the building and Arbuthnot. And I mean, Arbuthnot's a pretty, pretty fast road. So my, my, my main question in all this is, the aerial views show some benches and, you know, maybe some students hanging out in, in front of the new pretty windows, that kind of thing. What about security? Are we going to do any kind of fencing or are we okay there? I'm just thinking it's a very major arterial in the city.
It is set back more than the, the angle of view in the rendering might imply. We might turn back to the.
And one of the reasons that I'm bringing this up, you know, we've got security of people coming on to the campus. But also just a, you know, we always hear these stories of cars running into convenience stores and that kind of thing. And to me, there, there's not much distance there. When we did the Lamar addition, we put a wall up from blocking Lamar from the cafeteria space, the new outdoor space for the students. So I was just curious.
So there, there is quite a bit of elevation change.
There is about what, third?
And there's over 100 and, it's almost 150 feet just to the sidewalk. And then.
Oh, really?
Just 160 to the actual street.
That, that section's set back a little bit, Dr. Rasch. Those other two portions do come out from the old Bowie High School.
Right.
So that is a little setback.
Yeah, so currently, the actual auditorium and the gymnasium are closer to Arbuthnot than our addition will be.
Okay. Okay, yeah, that's a further setback.
And it's topography, although you would think of it as flat, it actually rises quite a bit.
Quite a bit higher, the addition than the street.
Okay. Okay.
Maybe, maybe what we could have at request is they put something like those safety balls that you see them at City Hall. If the traffic comes, it hits that, not the school.
Something.
We will absolutely study that. I think we'll find that they'll run into the.
And fly.
They'll run into the, the incline of elevation of the topography.
I also see some trees being placed here. I also see no turn zones coming in. So it's not like they're coming straight. It's a straightaway. So they would have to suddenly hit a, hit something and turn into that area. So, and Ms. Penney, I think that's a great idea. If you then look at it and there's a need, placing those things can always be added after the fact with a good design look.
So I do have a few books with that image. If you'd like, I can give you a different book.
I'm fine because I got, I had the opportunity to see it while we were in committee. So I'm fine with it.
But I have one right here if you'd like me to hand it to you.
Ms. Mays has one. I can see it right here. I think Mr., Dr. Rasch is the one.
Someone, please take that in.
No, that's, that's, that's all right.
Dr. Rasch, take the.
Thank you so much. So does anybody else have any concerns? Or am I just being hypersensitive as far as exposure? Arbuthnot is such a different animal than most other roads in our district with the, the amount of traffic. And then it's right across, well, I guess right now it's not across from much of anything. But it will be. I just didn't know if we needed to put any kind of fencing or anything. I just, I don't want people, we, we go through so much in making sure that getting into the building is secure. But if we have students that are out there, I'd hate to have people walking up and bothering them. And I just want to make sure they're safe. and I just want to make sure they're safe.
Dr. Reisch, I personally, I've, I've never heard of a single accident at that location.
I'm talking.
I think it's dropped back far enough, I think there's an incline and I think Ms. Pena had a solution that if we need to, to add it after the fact, there's, I think that's a, a good solution.
I was talking pedestrian entry this time.
On the backside, on that Arbuthnot?
On the Arbuthnot side, yeah.
We asked that question because we were concerned initially that everyone would think that that side would be the entry into the building since that is their address, so the building has the doors for emergency exits, but it's, if you're talking about getting access to those doors to get in.
No, I'm sorry, I, I, let me clarify, I mean pedestrian entry onto the campus grounds, onto the property there where students will be hanging out.
Oh, so like where the soccer fields used to be, where the baseball team plays, that, that greenery that's in that area?
No, 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 right, right there off of, for between, right at the, the Arbuthnot side, the, the two-story addition, on the outside, there's benches, there's places where it looks like students will be hanging out. And that's right at Arbuthnot. So people could just walk right there and get right into our students' business.
That's true. Hopefully they will be in the classroom and not sitting out there.
Well, that's why I just wondered how protected they are, the, the space there. I'm just going through my mind, the, our other junior highs that we have, most of our schools really that I can think of, we don't have a, an open access like that, especially to such a major area where people can just walk onto the campus grounds where students are. We've got it fenced in on the back property or something like that.
Barnett, Barnett, yes.
Bailey's wide open, Arlington High's got a wide open front, Barnett's fairly wide open.
Do students hang out in front of Bailey?
Yeah, they hang out all over the place. They're on the side, they're in the front, they're in the back.
See, I, I picture them on the side and the back, but not necessarily on the Bowen side. Okay, all right. Okay. No. Okay, well, good. I'm just making sure we got it covered. Thank you, thanks for indulging me.
Thank you, Dr. Reisch. Ms. Pena?
Actually, that was very good and the only other question we didn't address, which everybody knows I asked, and I did ask during the conversation, was about the safety of the glass because of the tornadoes that can come through and I'm, I have such a big fear of them. And I was assured that there was a safety area inside the building that the students could go to, but Ms. Solon's had a good question, is if, if in the event it does hit, will the glass be of such design that, that it will shatter first rather than break when it's hit? What is the quality of the glass that is there to prevent the shards of glass shooting in should something hit it or, or should the tornado hit? Is that sa- a safety factor that has been thought into the process of this building?
It is a, it's a one-inch insulated glass that commonly is found in, in the newer construction. One could add a film to that glass to make it more impact resistant. That's not typically done, but just, and then for this school, there's more than adequate shelter area away from, from the, the outside walls, which is typically where they would always go is kind of inside the building.
Okay. If no one has any other questions, then this went to committee. Mr. Hibbs is actually the chair, but since he is absent, he asked that Keisha and I, on his behalf, make the recommendation to the, to the board that the committee has reviewed and accepted and recommends approval of what has been presented.
Thank you, Ms. Pena, coming from committee. We don't need a second, it's time for any further discussion. Seeing none, I remember this is a schematic design, so it's the first of many steps for this process. Please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees voting affirmative. Thank you so much, ladies, we look forward to more presentations and final designs on this, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is items we withdrawn from consent agenda, or the items we withdrawn tonight. Seeing none, we'll be considering items on the consent agenda. Ms. Powell?
President Hogg, board members, Dr. Kavasos, this evening, we are reporting to you donations to total eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and that brings our year-to-date total to five hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars. Also, there are four bids on the agenda this evening for your consideration and in all cases, the administration is recommending the low bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Powell, and always thank the community for the donations, bids. Always is a, a welcome treat to hear that. At this time, is there a motion for the consent? Ms. Pena, see your light flashing?
Yes, I just did want to make sure that the students know that in this consent agenda, we have an item that says, "Consider instructional day waiver for February twenty-fourth and May fifth due to inclement weather." So we are submitting a request to get that waiver, so the students will only have to make up the two days planned rather than the four days plan.
We're, we're just submitting it.
Right, we're submitting, the board's recommending it, so we want it, that doesn't mean it'll get approved, but we have requested it.
I have a feeling it'll get approved. So at this time, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Pena, a second by Dr. Reisch. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees on affirmative, we have a consent agenda approved. Next, we'll move to discussion item for the evening, Academic Services 2015-16 Strategic Priorities. Dr. Kavasos and Dr. Wertz.
Thank you, President Hogg, and as part of our continued implementation of our strategic plan, Academic Services Department has worked and reviewed data, our data, our student achievement data, and has defined some academic priorities that we want to share with the board and, and share some detail regarding that as it aligns our work in the future. So, Dr. Wertz?
Thank you, President Hogg, Dr. Kavasos, School Board. Thank you for having me here this evening to share with you some of the priorities that we are outlining for our work for the upcoming school year and actually several school years here in the Academic Services Department. When we tried to define what we wanted our work to be about, it really was about aligning work and services across all of our departments so that we can work in an interdependent and collaborative way. And we began our study of what district needs were based upon what we knew the district's vision and mission were and the strategic plan. So as I go through the presentation tonight, you'll note that most of the work that I'm outlining here is directly related to six recommendations that were outlined in the curriculum audit that was done as part of the strategic plan. The first recommendation that I want to highlight is the recommendation around designing and implementing a comprehensive and curriculum-driven budget where we are intentional about linking our resources to the instructional priorities that we have in the district. And the reason I note that is because in order to do this, the first thing you have to do is have instructional priorities. And so tonight, I will share with you what some of those instructional priorities are, but we are working actively with Ms. Powell and her department to design a budget in the Academic Services Department that is well-aligned to what our priorities are. We've used data to inform us as to what the needs were for students and, and we have worked across our departments to design a budget that was transparent and open and collaborative in its design. So we are focusing our work specifically, the finances around our work, around priorities that we feel have the highest ability to impact student achievement over the next several years. I just wanted to give you a, a reference, this is kind of the process that we went through when we started this design specifically with regards to our budget development in, in association with our priorities. We conducted a, a needs assessment and a data analysis and I'll share with you a little bit about what some of those findings were tonight. And from those, from those data sets, we identified priorities. And when we looked at our priorities, we tried to think about what were, what are some broad brushing strokes that we could make that would actually impact the several needs that we were finding and how could we align our work to those needs? Once we identified what those action items were and we started thinking about what initiatives we wanted to initiate, we also then began to work across our departments to design our budget and then utilize, we will intend on utilizing those funding source to maximize our efforts. So this is just a reminder of what some of our current performance looks like. This was shared with you by Dr. Barlow last time he was up here, I think it was like a week or two ago, feels like just the other day. And these are the four indices that we are held accountable to by the state, index one, two, three, and four, specifically around student achievement, about students making progress as they matriculate from year to year, how we're intentionally closing the achievement gaps between our various student groups and then the level at which our students are, are ready, specifically around post-secondary readiness. When we, when we analyze our data, we notice that there are some things that naturally rose to the surface. And when you do a comprehensive needs assessment, you want to dig deep to identify what you believe are the root causes of some of your challenges. And when you're looking at data, it's, especially when you look at some of our state data, in our district, there are some trends that are, that bubble to the surface that we can see pretty obvious and we are intentionally trying to address those. What we've noticed is that our trend lines typically and generally are mirroring the state trends lines. So where the state's academic areas tend to go up, we tend to go up with them and when they drop a little bit, we tend to drop. And we have almost this trend line that looks very similar to each other as you kind of watch our data over the years. The other thing is our students are reaching the college readiness standard. The, the number and percentage of students in the district that are reaching college readiness standards are, is actually improving and the students that are reaching the exceeding progress standard is improving as well. So the quality of learning that's taking place in the classroom is helping, are, is helping students to achieve levels that are higher than the minimum standard, which is the passing rate. And we noticed that the, our goal obviously is to help kids do better than just the minimum passing rate and that trend line is actually getting better. The percentage of students that are participating in exams that are related to higher education, our average is actually above the state average. And we do have schools all across the district, as you noted from Dr. Barlow's previous presentation, that are reaching distinctions and those, in order to obtain those distinctions, you are compared to schools that look like yours. And we have earned several distinctions with like campuses all across the district. Our four-year graduation rate is improving also and we have significant growth among our ELL populations, our English language learners, the percentage of students that are graduating in a four-year timeframe for our English language learners, there's a significant growth in that area. Some of our areas that our needs are, that are continuing to be persistent is we do have significant gaps between the students that are performing in our bilingual program and students that are performing in our ESL program. And we also have persistent gaps that exist between the all-student group, which is the overall general population, which includes all students, and students that are highlighted in, in three specific populations, special education, economically disadvantaged, and our English language learners. And then we also are continuing in, in our data, we recognize that we need to focus on continuing to foster students' performance so that the number and percentage of students that are reaching the college readiness and exceeds progress standards continues to increase. That actually is on the positive trend line, but as you could see from Dr. Barlow's previous presentation, we want that number to be much higher than it is right now. So as we looked at our data and we collaborated among our departments, we were able to define what we're calling big rocks. Big rocks are the big priorities. You've heard, you know, the, they're in the books, they have the rocks and then you have the sand that you pour in after the rocks. And so we're focusing on what those big rocks are with the idea or the belief that if you focus on the things that have the biggest, the biggest impact or the, the biggest areas of challenge, that your, your system will be better aligned to meet student needs. The, the priorities that I'm going to share with you tonight are, are focused around timelines that are multi-year. So I, we are starting initiating all of these projects over the next year, but they are ongoing and not, and they're, not all of them will be complete by the end of next school year and I'll give you some sense of that as I'm going along. But the purpose of the big rocks is really about providing focus for our department to really promote implementation of the actual changes at the campus level in a way that's quali- that, that's high-quality and in a way that's supportive of adult learning. We know that adults learn differently than students and they, and as adults, we need longer periods of contact time with our new learning in order to adapt it or adopt it into our, our, our practice. And so we're trying to consider that timeline as we roll out new initiatives so that our staff are able to absorb the new learning, practice it meaningfully and receive coaching and support along the way so that it can become part of our practice on a daily basis at the schools. And then also, of course, we intend our decisions to be data-driven and we will monitor the implementation of our new initiatives as we implement them so that we can decide whether we need to make adjustments or discontinue our efforts in, in these areas. So our priorities are going, are, are addressed around four major tiers. The first three are quality tier-one instruction and that sounds broad and when we talk about quality tier-one instruction, and I'll show you up here mid, later on in the presentation, quality tier-one instruction is, is the instruction that all students have access to, regardless of your demographic, regardless of the programs that you're in. Tier-one instruction belongs to all students and everyone has access. So as an example, I heard someone tell me once long ago that if you were a student with disabilities and you received services in special education, you had a passport to special education, your actual member, your, your, your residence was actually in tier-one. And so our goal is to really enhance the quality of tier-one instruction across the district, which we know should serve statistically at least eighty to eighty-five percent of our students without the need of interventions. And then we are also going to continue to focus our work around improving the, the programming around college and career readiness and then also inclusive education. And for the purpose of our, of our discussion tonight, when we say inclusive education, we are not referring to inclusive services for special education, although that's one component of it. We're talking about providing inclusive education so that any student, regardless of their demographic, regardless of their, their programming, that they can have access to our general curriculum. So for example, we are also talking about English language learners and how they access general ed curriculum even though there's, they are in the process of acquiring the English language. And then the, the fourth bullet is around our work around the bond initiatives. This is a priority for us because of our commitment to implementing everything that's associated with the school, the bond that was passed last school year. And so tonight, I will just reiterate some of those projects that are undergoing or underway over the next several years. So the first, the first priority that I want to talk about tonight is the quality tier-one instruction. And this is focused around five major recommendations that were identified in the curriculum audit. The first one is the curriculum management system, designing a curriculum management system, also developing and implementing a system that directs the, the revision or the rewrite of curriculum over time. And we want to create a system that does that so that it's not something that we just do and then we wait for. We have an ongoing system for doing that on a consistent basis. We're also be working on developing a comprehensive student assessment and program evaluation plan. We'll be intentionally focusing on how to integrate technology into our classroom instruction so that we can improve the quality in, of instruction as well as the level of student achievement. And then also work to design a comprehensive professional development or professional learning plan that's aligned to the curriculum and instruction that teachers are asked to deliver and they are delivering in the classroom. So the first one is the curriculum management system, this is the first recommendation. And this is, there are five components that we'll be focusing on as we design our curriculum management system. We'll be focusing on the, the actual design of the curriculum itself and the way that it's actually being delivered. When you're thinking about curriculum instruction, it's not just about the document that teachers utilize to plan their instruction, but it's also about the, the support that's provided in order for them to actually deliver that curriculum to the student. We'll also be designing in that curriculum system, management system, a process for monitoring the implementation of the curriculum as well as monitoring the, the, the quality of that implementation with the teachers and also with our work in the curriculum department. We'll also be embedding our student and program evaluation and then our, our professional learning to support the delivery of the curriculum. So the curriculum management system, as you can see here, is not something that's isolated and separate in and of itself. Some of the other recommendations that I mentioned initially in the, in the, in the, at the beginning of the presentation, like these, the development of the student evaluation and a program evaluation, the design of a professional learning plan that's comprehensive, those are also components that are part of a, an overall comprehensive curriculum management system because they all are interlinked and, and actually feed information to one another. So what is curriculum? When we're designing our curriculum, we are actually designing around three major concepts, the what, the why, and the how. And there are two components of the curriculum that are very, very tightly coupled, meaning that we manage them very, as part of a management system, we manage them from the district level very tightly and we do that so that we can provide students with a guaranteed and viable curriculum so that regardless of which school that you're at, regardless of your mobility, you should be able to, if our curriculum management system is tight, we should, a student should be able to leave one campus, if their family moves, enter into another one and be able to pick up where they left off without having gaps in their learning. So we will be tightly, we call these, some of them tightly coupled and loosely coupled. And what's tightly coupled from the district level is the content standards, what we want students to be learning in the classroom, which is defined by the state. And then why, meaning the performance standards, what, what are the actual verbs and its modifiers? What is it that we want the students to actually be able to do with the content? So here's what we want you to learn and this is what we want you to be able to do with it once you're, you've learned it. The part that's loosely coupled is the how part and there's. And there's, when you think about teaching and learning, there's the science to teaching and there's the art to teaching. And the art to teaching really is about the how. It's giving teachers the autonomy to pick and choose the best research-based strategies that they feel should be used to meet their students' individual learning needs. Our role as a curriculum and instruction department or academic services is to ensure that we provide in our documents meaningful exemplars and resources so teachers have tools in their belts to make their decisions for their students. But which ones they pull out to use, that's really more loosely coupled so that teachers have the discretion to make those decisions that meet their students' needs since they know their students in their classroom. When we work on our curriculum documents, we will be redesigning them, and this process is actually going to be starting this summer, and it will continue over the next year and the year after that. And we will have several components that will be in our curriculum documents. And the curriculum rewrite is very significant because what we will be attempting to do or what we will be doing is we will be ensuring that regardless of which course your children are in or regardless of which type of course, meaning whether it's a general education course, whether it's a CTE course, that the curriculum documents will have the same level of quality to them so that teachers can have some consistency in their planning. So what our components will consist of is a bundle overview. And just to give you some sense of what that means is when we are designing our curriculum, we will be creating what we call a vertical alignment document. And what we do is we look at, for example, we go to grade eight, and we see what are kids expected to learn in grade eight mathematics, and then we plan all the way backwards and we see what are the implications all the way down to kinder and how we move that forward from year to year to year. Well, what we do is, once we create that vertical alignment document, then we begin to bundle those standards together in ways that make sense when you teach. So which standards actually have to be grouped together to formulate meaningful instruction for students? In our curriculum documents, we will provide an overview of those bundles for teachers so they understand how and why those are grouped together the way they are. We'll also articulate specifically the Texas essential knowledge and skills that are being addressed in those bundles, and we will be embedding components of the instructional model directly into the documents themselves, including the target types as part of the deconstruction. So right now, some of the training that's gone on is teachers have been trained in the instructional model, they've been deconstructing standards. We will begin that process in the curriculum department to strategically identify the standards that we would need to deconstruct and identify in the document itself as part of the model. And that should work seamlessly so that when teachers understand the model and are utilizing the model, their document also speaks to it as well. It's not where the document doesn't have any components and then they're asked to do a model. We'll also have performance criteria in the curriculum so that the teachers will know what are the actual observable behaviors you, as a teacher, should be able to see in order to help you understand that a student is in fact mastering the content. The content essentials, we will have essential questions, and then we will also be working to marriage the process standards to the content standards. So in the Texas essential knowledge and skills in mathematics and science, there are process skills. And they're different than content process standards and content standards. And the content standards are what they need to learn, but what the state actually defines, for example, mathematics, is they actually give you examples of the context in which they should be learning how to do that content. Well, what often happens in schools is we struggle because we know what the state wants us to teach it, but we don't necessarily know how they want us to do it. But when the students take the STAR exam, the state selects what the process they want the kids to be tested on using that standard. And so what happens is some students will struggle answering the question. It's not because they don't understand the content, it's just they weren't taught to do it the way the state is asking them. So what we've done is we've taken the, we will be taking the process standards and marrying them to the content. So when the teacher reads the document, it will literally say, this is what the student is learning, and this is how they have to be able to do it. So we're taking the guesswork out of their work to make it a little more easy for a teacher to understand specifically what the state's asking the students to be able to do. We'll also be aligning, of course, our documents across grade-level boundaries and then providing examples and exemplars to teachers about the best ways to go about providing instruction to the students, as well as some sample strategies, examples of how to assess the students in meaningful ways to know that they've in fact mastered it along the way, and then resources. This rewrite or curriculum revision process, like I said, will begin, and this is the areas that we will start with, is all-grade subject areas that are core pre-K through eighth grade. And we will also be focusing on the EOC areas that students will be asked to be assessed on on STAR, meaning Algebra I, Biology, US History, and then English I and II. We're also beginning the rewrite of our Career and Technological Education, our CTE program. And Mr. Wright, who's the director of CTE programming, and his team have already begun the process of being trained on what curriculum writing looks like and what components should be embedded into a curriculum, and they're going to begin that process to rewrite curriculum, especially in preparation of our new CTE center that will be opening. We're also developing this curriculum in phases, not phases as far as time goes over years, but as far as the process in which we use to write the curriculum. And we're being intentional about that because what we don't want to do is just create a template, hire people to come, and then write what they used to do in the classroom. What we want to do is train people who are going to be involved in the writing process, what curriculum writing needs to look like, what kinds of components need to be there, and then ensure that our auxiliary departments, meaning our specialists that are in the World Languages Department, our specialists that are part of the Technology Department or in the Special Education Department, are at the table so that those strategies and enhancements are actually embedded into the document already so that when a teacher has the document in their hands, they're able to consider all the ways they can differentiate for the various types of students sitting in their classroom. We're specifically working around this also, as I was mentioning, with technology. We're not looking to create a document where there's lots of guesswork about how technology could be used. We want the teachers to have the support so that they can have solid examples about the best ways to teach the content that's in the document using different technology devices or strategies. When we say technology, what we don't want to do is put devices in people's hands without providing them with a professional learning opportunity on how to do it the right way. And so all of these things I'm talking about, we will be working as part of our comprehensive professional learning plan to make sure that people are equipped to do the things that we're asking. So when you think about the quality criteria inside our document, when we were looking at the curriculum audit, there are some basic components that should be included in a quality curriculum. And so you can see up here, there are five criterion that were noted. And then we talked specifically, if you look on the right side, how these deficits are being addressed in the new document that we're going to be writing. In the first criterion, which is around clarity and specificity of objectives, we are doing those things that I mentioned, which is marrying the content and process standards. We're actually identifying for the teachers specifically what the learning targets are. We will be giving them very specific ideas about what the estimated amount of time it should take to actually teach that bundle. Right now, that's one of the struggles that existed among the teaching population is we provide them with the curriculum and we tell them it needs to be taught in a six-weeks period. But there's not a lot of direction specifically about how much time each thing should take, so we're going to help give teachers a gauge about how much time that should take so they can get a sense of how fast they need to move or if they can slow down. And then we're also going to be providing them with some examples and non-examples of the content. In the second criterion, which is specifically about the continuity of the curriculum to the assessment process, meaning that the two are married and aligned with one another and they're not seen as separate things, we will be aligning those two items specifically as part of our comprehensive student assessment program. And then we will also be ensuring that in the document itself, we provide assessment items for teachers that they can use to formatively assess their kids along the way to see possibly, do they already know the content, so I don't need to spend time on this, they're ready to keep moving? Or are they getting it along the way, and what adjustments do I need to make? In criterion three, it's about delineation of prerequisite skills to make sure that the students are prepared for when they're coming. So we are creating a vertical alignment document to ensure that teachers, if you're a second-grade teacher or you're an eighth-grade teacher, you know what the kids were doing the year before you, and you know what the kids are going to be asked to do with that specific standard the year after you. So you know where your lane is and how you can differentiate for kids. So if a student is behind or struggling, you know specifically how to go back. And if a student is ready to be accelerated, you know how you can move them forward by standard, not just by grade level, but by standard. And then also, we are working, the fourth criterion of a quality document would be the delineation of the major instructional tools, and we are going to be providing resources, very specific resources for teachers that are directly aligned to the bundles that we're creating. So here's what we want you to teach, and here are some resources you can use to do it. And then, of course, how do you do it in the classroom? How do you actually teach the content? And so we'll be providing a section about teacher notes and instructional approaches that a teacher could consider as he or she was teaching.
Dr. Rich, let's give you a breath for a second.
No problem. Am I talking too fast?
No, 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 you're not.
I don't have a listy over there gauging me.
It's a ton of content, and I don't want us to go quick. We'll get all the questions, but I know Dr. Rice has one right now.
All right.
I mainly wanted to take a breath for you.
Thank you.
Wow. There's a lot of information, that's for sure. Just a couple of questions. It seemed like this might be a good breakpoint to talk a little bit about some of the things that you've covered before we go into the next wave. I definitely appreciate being able to provide the teachers more specific examples of how much time different things will take versus, here you go, got to cover all this in six weeks, good luck. I think that's spot-on. My question comes into play with the differings of the populations in each classroom. How was that figured into, or how will that, I guess, be figured into that type of a, here, this type of activity should be 20 minutes when you have maybe a discipline issue, you have an advanced kid, you have who knows what. How is that playing into all of this?
Well, most of the time is not necessarily around the number of minutes it takes to do this lesson because the units are bundled. What we're telling teachers is how long it should take to get through the bundle, to get through the unit. So, for example, it might take you, we would say, if you're looking at the calendar and you're going to stay on the scope and sequence that we were providing, we would make the suggestion that it would take you five days to get through this bundle or this unit. And then maybe in another unit, we would say, this unit of study is actually going to take you two weeks to get through. And then the teacher has the flexibility to move faster or slower within that week. The other thing I think it's important to note is when they receive the calendar that will be attached to the actual document itself, we take into consideration about the need to either accelerate or slow down. So we don't create a calendar that's bumper-to-bumper, so to speak, where it's the first day of the six weeks to the last day of the six weeks. We utilize, we create cushion time so that a teacher could slow down if they needed to without getting really far behind. The purpose of the calendar isn't to take away the teacher's ability to slow down or accelerate instruction. The purpose of the calendar is really designed to help them gauge where they should kind of fall and to ensure that when students are mobile, students are moving from school to school, that we can help ensure that they're not missing chunks of instruction because in a certain unit, a teacher decided to go with teaching this, Section A, went over this school, they weren't quite, they had already covered that. Does that make sense? So it's really tried to give some continuity, but we don't get down, we're not getting down to like you have to do it within 20 minutes. That's really up to the teacher. We're giving them more of a space of time of how long it should take to do the unit.
Okay. Well, that's good. A help and assistance, but definitely not a prescriptive, this is what you got to do. And that takes the creativity out of the art of teaching, as you mentioned. Okay. Can I ask one more, or do you just want to keep on going? You know I could ask questions all night, so we can keep going, that's fine.
Go ahead, Dr. Rice, if it's right on some of these subjects.
Well, I wanted to make sure, can you describe to us the process of who was involved in putting this amazing thing together? I know you covered it just a little bit. As far as, obviously you, did we have, like, lead teachers in each grade level?
Well, we haven't, they will be involved in the actual creation of the documents themselves. What components are needing to be involved in the document is based on the research of what's supposed to be in a curriculum. We've been, when we started the process of the curriculum rewrite, we engaged with Dr. Crane, who trained the curriculum staff on what curriculum's supposed to look like, what components should be there. And so what we're doing right now as a curriculum department is creating the shell, and then there are phases inside about how the writing takes place. And so teachers will be involved in the writing. We'll be sharing this process with the principals to get their feedback. Actually, and we're sharing it here with you tonight to get feedback because the process won't even actually start until the summertime. So there's prep work that's going on to make this happen. The only thing that's happened so far that's already a model for us to get started is this year, because the standards for mathematics changed K-8, we started, we had to rewrite the math curriculum because the standards were different. So the mathematics curriculum includes so many, includes many, many of these components because it was intentionally designed with that. And what we've decided, what we've done now as we move forward is we have some components we still need to add to the math and make some adjustments, and then we are going to utilize that process as a model. The difference is that with the math curriculum is because how fast we had to accelerate that process because the standards came out and people are literally teaching right now, that was done primarily by the curriculum department. What we want to utilize, do now, is to go back with the teachers and say, what worked and what's not working? How can we make some adjustments to this, either the sequence of the math or how it was actually happening in the classroom? And to be frank, I think that's a process that should happen consistently because just because we generate a document, people start teaching, doesn't necessarily mean it's not working. We need feedback from the actual end-users. So I don't know if that answers your question.
No, it does, it does. I appreciate it. The, I guess the only other question I have for now is, a little bit earlier when you're talking about deconstructing TECS or TECs or whatever the official way to say it is, is it TECS or TECs?
Well, phonetically, it's TECs, but everyone says TECS.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a debate in the education world.
Yeah. Because it was TECS for many years, all of a sudden it was TECs. Okay. So regarding that, our focus here with our strategic plan and becoming a globally acknowledged premier district doesn't hold a whole lot of merit with our accountability system. Nobody likes the tests. There's nobody that likes the tests. But obviously, we have to make sure that we are matching what we need to do with state. And the vision that we've put into place is one that will take us with, to a level where, yeah, we're passing those. We're hitting all those marks. That's not a big deal. This is what we're doing. And what I heard, I think, more than that was more focus on making sure that we're going to hit the marks on those tests. And I know we have to, but is there also beyond that? You know, with our strategic plan, we've got two metrics out of 28 that are focused on the tests because we want to send that message. We don't want to have that. We don't want to teach the test, nobody does. So it seemed like I kind of heard that in here, and I just want to make sure that that's not the case.
Well, let me clarify. So we're required to teach all the standards. And you've heard the phrase, if you're in Texas, if there's a standard, we love it. So we have a very, very, very robust group of standards that, quite frankly, it's very, it's almost impossible to teach everything to the highest level because of the number of standards that we're required to teach. So we have to be specific about which ones we, we're going to embed them all into our curriculum, but it's more about identifying what we would call power standards, the ones that we know are significant for kids in their learning in whatever course they choose to take and so that they're prepared to go to college, right? I think the thing to think about in terms of teaching to the test is, for me, it's more about framing that in a different way in terms of, what we don't want to do is teach kids, when you hear people say typically teach the test, we think, well, we're only going to teach so that kids can pass the test. What we're talking about in our document is to make sure that when we design our curriculum, that we're also designing it in such a way so that what's actually, what students are being taught is actually what's assessed. The research in education, like Fenwick English, I don't know if you may have heard of him, talks specifically about aligning the two. And the challenge that happens for kids and the reason why their success doesn't look like it's, they don't do very well, is we spend all this effort in class, and then someone comes around and assesses them on something completely different. And so our task in the curriculum is not so that we write assessments that are directly just teaching the test. It's just to ensure that when a student is asked to do something on the assessment, that our teaching has prepared them to be able to apply it in the way that the state is going to ask, and make sure the two are aligned with each other. It'd be like a teacher teaching a unit, and then she gives an assessment or he gives an assessment, and it's not about what they taught at all. Our task is to make sure the two are aligned. So it's not teaching to the test, it's making sure that what we teach is actually aligned to what the state's going to ask them to do. It's almost like semantics, it's a small way of thinking about it differently, but it's not necessarily, the test is not driving our teaching, if that makes sense.
So I'd like to add also, Dr. Rice, that that's why Tier One is one of the priorities and not the only priority. So you're going to hear in a minute, Carl- So you're going to hear in a minute college and career readiness, inclusive practices, and then bond. And our bond includes our dual language fine arts and our STEM academies and things like that. So that, because this is the foundational piece of our curriculum, but it's not, that's not the only priority for the department. It's to go beyond, as you mentioned, and fulfill our strategic plan.
Okay, I, that's, that's good. I just want to make sure that at the end of the day, we are providing our students the ability to, to have a, a creative exploratory, critical thinking, enhanced experience in the district. I mean, that's, to me, that's the goal.
And if they, and, and our philosophy is, if you create a curriculum that allows teachers to provide that kind of learning experience to students, the test will take care of itself. The task is just to make sure that that experience you provide allows them to actually be able to do that. So it's not, it's almost like, the, the goal is what you're describing, the, the thing they should be able to do, having done that, is also apply to meet the state standard. I consider the STAR test almost like a hoop. Everyone has to get through it, but it's not the, it's not the goal, it's the minimum expectation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for indulging me.
Yeah, no problem.
It's solved.
Okay.
It's a lot of material. This is a lot of material. And I have so many questions, I'm not going to ask them all now because I assume we're going to get to that in a minute, but for right now, just want to make sure, because I absolutely agree with Dr. Raj on this. So is, at the, at the heart, is this horizontal and vertical integration?
What do you mean by integration?
Of, of the curriculum? So it's, it's, the curriculum is vertically integrated through the system, but also across time. So now that we, we are, we are vertically and horizontally aligned?
Align.
Is that at the heart?
Absolutely. So the curriculum, the way it'll be, the way it's being written is to ensure that horizontally, meaning everyone across the system, regardless of which school you're at, if you're sitting in a fifth grade classroom, this is, everyone should be working around the same thing at the same time, right? It doesn't necessarily mean that some teachers won't be faster, some will be slower, but everyone should have a, have, there should be some commonality. And then vertically, meaning we should know from eighth grade all the way down to kindergarten how this standard actually is taught in kinder, what it looks like in first grade, and how it bleeds up gradually to eighth grade, yeah.
Right, that's, that's what I thought, listening to you. And I, I have so many more things. I'm so glad this is a discussion point tonight because this gives us more time to talk about this and that with that system of vertical and horizontal integration, you know, I share, I even more share the concern of, of how students that move through the system that are not students, that are the highly mobile students, that are not moving from school to school. Because also, at the, I would say, the very core of the strategic plan, job one, is that every student reach their full maximum potential. So I want to make sure that the horizontal piece of the integration does not slow the progress of the students that are able to move forward at a faster pace. And that not only in the planning and the design of the system that the students are allowed to, that the execution and the implementation, that these teachers have the adequate support, time, training, a resource to address that. Because it's one, it's one thing for us to, to design a system, it's a whole nother thing to be that classroom teacher.
Absolutely.
And so with this, you know, listening to this, and it's exciting to listen to all of these, this discussion this evening, but I can imagine from the classroom teacher's standpoint, thinking, you know, whoa, wait, I've got to take care of the budget and now this, this whole realignment and inclusion and so forth. So I'm, I'm concerned that the system designed this way can meet the student needs and that the teachers will be able to meet the student needs and not, they would not be overwhelmed with responsibilities.
Well, I, that's a very good point and one that we're, we're very much thinking about when we consider the timelines, which is why I was intentional at the beginning of the presentation to make sure that everyone knew that this is multi-year because I'm, we're trying to be very cognizant about the amount of, of things that are being pushed out to teachers at one time. Everything has to be digestible and we, people, every person that's an adult needs contact time with new content in order to make, to master it. So that's the discussion that we're working on right now is a timeline for how we would roll it out. What I will say in the long run is it, they will be easier in the long run for teachers. If I was able to show you our curriculum documents right now in all the four content areas, they're, they're all different. Some are more bulky, some are less bulky, some even, there's, there's major, there's similar components in each one, but they're, they're all very kind of different. In, in the new curriculum design, if you're a teacher, the documents are going to feel very similar. So that will be helpful and I, in everything, in the readability of the document, it's going to be much easier to navigate and much more user friendly. The comment I wanted to make in reference to allowing students to accelerate or not, with the inclusion of a vertical alignment document, it actually helps facilitate that process for a teacher a little more. So what we will be doing as part of our assessment, which I'll get to in a few minutes, is in looking at, for example, screeners. And, or even if we include assessment pieces, a teacher may decide at the very beginning of a unit, wow, these five kids already know this content, they don't even need to waste their time on it, I'm ready to move on with that, that group. What the vertical alignment document will allow them to do is see, is to say, in fifth grade, this standard is what we're, what I'm about to teach this group, but these five kids are ready to move on. What does that look like in sixth grade? And they can see how, how the standard reads in sixth grade and they'll have access to the sixth grade curriculum with the same, and it'll look the same as theirs in fifth grade. It'll have the same resources, except applied to sixth grade, exemplars, examples on how to do a technology. And a teacher could actually go into that and lift it and utilize it to plan a lesson that actually addresses their needs. But now we've actually gave them the resource and the, and the opportunity to do that, whereas now, they can go to the curriculum document, but they have to, they'll have to search through, they'll have to figure out which standard is what and where it's at, whereas the new one, we have, we, the curriculum alignment document, it's side by side by side. So they'll, they'll be able to see their lane and see the lane in front of them and the lane behind them. So it, it should help them. Our task is when we roll out the curriculum document is being very intentional about how we provide the professional learning opportunities for them and then the type of support we push out to campuses to support them while they're rolling it out. Because, you know, it's, it'll be a new document. So we're being thoughtful about that.
And, and I don't want to hold up the rest of your presentation this, this evening.
I have all night until early morning, so.
Yeah. We can, we can do that.
We don't.
We, and we have to remember this, it began with, with a study of a gap analysis, with curriculum management audit. And so I know that, you know, we've already established the need for this, but I want to make sure that to, as we go through this tremendous amount of information and make sure that we take time to, it's always the execution, it's always the implementation that is so difficult. So, and it, and it was not a cakewalk designing it, I'm sure either, so.
No, and it's, we're still fine tuning it, yeah.
Dr. Wertz, last Mr. Barron wants to go. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, President Hogg. I'm going to hold my questions until the end, but I should point out for my colleagues that Dr. Wertz presented this presentation to the Financial Futures Committee the other night, and if you think we're having fun with it, you should have seen those folks.
Dr. Wertz, continue.
Okay. So the next component that we're working on is part of the, one of the recommendations of the curriculum audits, to develop a comprehensive student assessment and program evaluation plan. And so what this will entail is two items, two things, separate things. One is how to assess students as they're matriculating through the school year and multiple school years to ensure they're, they're effectively mastering the content that we're designing for them. And then also, how do we evaluate programs that we have in the district to ensure they're meeting students' needs? Which ones do we want to continue? Which ones should we discontinue? Which ones do we need to make adjustments to? So we're going to be in the process of designing those two components, which will consist of really finding a systematic way of collecting, disseminating, and analyzing student achievement data and program evaluation results. One of the things that we're working on is how, we've been thinking, how can we service schools? How can we provide them with tools that make their job easier for, to work with students? And one of the things that we've been doing is working with the area superintendents and Dr. Barlow's department to design reports so that principals don't have to go digging for data to find and analyze how students are doing in their classroom based upon our district assessments. We will gather that data for them and deliver it to them. And so we've just rolled out the first part of that with principals. We've received lots of positive feedback and in that, those data packets are not only information for the principal, but actually for the teachers themselves and the breakdowns of their classrooms. So that's, that's one thing also. We'll be working with you here in the near future about revising or updating board policy that will help provide some direction specifically around what program evaluation is and how to utilize that information to make decisions here in the district. One of the biggest challenges with program evaluation for people is to define what is a program? What is it? What actually constitutes a program? So what we will be doing is creating a system where we routinely evaluate programs on us every so many years so we can constantly be making adjustments to our work and not waiting for us to have a problem before we make those adjustments. We'll also be working on developing high-quality formative assessments that campuses can use to make decisions about students as they're learning and then provide some, some information to, and training to principals about how to utilize that information. And then I always, I just finished describing a program evaluation cycle, so a cycle that programs are evaluated. And then also utilizing data, not just at the campus level, but at the district level in the curriculum instruction department, the academic services department, routinely utilizing that data to help us make decisions on our work, what adjustments need to be made in the curriculum, and what kind of support can we send out to campuses to help them with their work with students rather than waiting for the principals to necessarily solicit that from us? We want to be able to be proactive. We'll also be working on developing a comprehensive learning plan and we'll be sharing some more information with you, with this, with you a little bit later, but this, what we're designing is a professional learning plan that's comprehensive enough to really provide emphasis around the curriculum design, the way that it's being written, and how it's being delivered. We will be providing a plan that's focused very much on the application of research-based instructional strategies in the classroom and then how to really make good instructional decisions around the curriculum design and which strategies to use utilizing data. We'll also be talking about in our curriculum, in our professional learning plan, creating an evaluation system to ensure that what we're teaching in our professional learning is actually finding its way towards implementation in the classroom. And then helping us to identify what support systems can we put in place to minimize the implementation gap that often exists between the difference of, here's what we're teaching and this is what actually is happening in the classroom. And usually that gap gets larger and larger or exists in the first place because of the lack of support while it's happening. So as you said, the biggest challenge in any system is the implementation piece. And so our professional learning plan will also include how we will be evaluating the quality of implementation of the strategies we're teaching. One of the, just as a side note regarding the professional learning plan, one of our, one of our goals is to streamline professional learning for teachers across the district as a service to them. And so one of the things, for example, that some of there will be working on is designing an institute for teachers to come to where they can have almost a one-stop-shop place to learn all the different types of things that are available to them without them having to hunt all summer long to find things. So that's just one example. We'll also be continuing our work around the K through two literacy framework. Originally it was K through three, but based upon our data analysis, we just feel like, and it goes back to what I was saying earlier about our comprehensive professional learning plan and evaluating the implementation, we feel like campuses and teachers still need continued support in the implementation of the two items which we already started, which was word study and guided reading. So we're going to continue our focus around K two to shore that up before we move on to the next phase. But our framework is really around one that's balanced literacy and the components of the balanced literacy model are noted there. Our focus right now is specifically around word study and guided reading. And last year, we implemented this with principals and the area superintendent and we, attendants, and we designed a tool that teachers and campuses could use to self-evaluate where they were and to identify how they should, what kind of things they should be thinking about or next steps as they progress in those two areas. We will also continue our work around the instructional model. And you're very familiar with the instructional model, we've talked about it before. The instructional model is around the assessment of learning rather than assess, instead of the, the assessment for learning rather than the assessment of learning. And so this model is really designed as one component of an instructional framework to help students really have more ownership in their learning and for us to learn how to best assess kids along the way to ensure they're mastering their content. It's continuous, it's ongoing, it's not necessarily graded. It provides feedback to students so they can make adjustments along the way and it helps us understand where kids are in the learning process. Our instructional model, as you know, is framed around three questions. It's, it's basically, the first thing we want to help students do is identify what's the endpoint I'm trying to get to, where am I in comparison to that endpoint, and then how do I close that gap between those two? And so we, we frame our work in the instructional model around these three questions. What we will be doing is we will be redesigning our implementation of the instructional model. We have learned through our experience this year about the instructional model and we've had several schools that have participated in learning about that and applying it in their classrooms. We feel the need to accelerate that process simply because it will be embedded into our curriculum documents. And what we don't want to create is a scenario where we have haves and have-nots in the district. Some schools understand certain components and some schools that don't, and then we have a document that has it in there and then there's confusion. So what we've decided to do is we're in the process of redesigning it now where we will be implementing the rollout of the instructional model in context of the work the teachers actually do. So it makes sense, it doesn't feel like something separate, it's actually part of their work, and we help them see naturally where it fits into their work. Some of the things that, that's part of their learning right now, like, for example, deconstructing standards, we will do that work for them. We will teach them what that means, so when they see the document, they understand what they're reading, but we will begin to do that work for them, which will take the labor-intensive piece away. Our core beliefs around the instructional model are really central to helping students begin to see themselves as learners and owning their own learning. Help students to actually be users of their assessment data, rather than just the teacher utilizing the assessment data, the students will do it, become critical decision-makers in their own learning. It helps teachers and students partner in the, in the learning process and gives teachers tools to make good decisions around what, what are sound assessment practices. I, I know you've seen this slide before, so I won't necessarily go over it in detail again, but basically this outlined the instructional impact that we believe the application of the instructional model would have in the classroom, where it really helps to create a student-centered environment where students take ownership for their learning. One of our other priorities outside of the quality tier one instruction is college and career readiness. And we're focusing this next year around these five main items. One is the redesign of the gifted and talented program in the elementary schools, the continued expansion of the early college high schools and the coursework those students are taking, the implementation of the new STEM academy at Martin High School, the expansion of our LOT program, and then also the implementation of the elementary STEM labs. And I included it in here because it's really redesigning, redesigning the way people think about those labs in the elementary schools. And we'll come back at a later date where I'll share with you the specifics of that plan. But I included it here even though it's part of the bond, simply because it's related to college and career readiness. When it comes to gifted and talented in the elementary schools, I think it's important for me to first say that this is not our end-all, be-all for advanced academics in elementary, it's our starting point. We are, we do have intentions on really transforming learning opportunities at the elementary ranks and giving students meaningful opportunities to engage in, in different types of learning, even if you aren't necessarily qualified for gifted and talented. Our starting point over the next school year is around gifted and talented. And we will be going through a comprehensive analysis about, and study about gifted and talented programming around the state, what are the quality program designs, what curricular implications does that have, what staffing implications does it have? And we will be redesigning that program in our elementary schools. We have, we will include in that process new, a new methodology for identifying students so that we can really capture the students who truly qualify for gifted and not leave anybody behind. So it will include, probably have, it will include some design of curriculum, program structure, and all these other components that I spoke to related to professional learning. We will continue with our early college high school. As you know, it's, it's located on TCC and allows students to acquire a degree and a high school diploma at the end of their time there. And our course expansion will, will include helping students become more ready for TSI. We know our goal is for students to walk away with an associate's degree, and in order to do that, they participate in dual credit, and so they have to qualify for TSI. And so we're trying to be proactive for the students that are currently at that campus to prepare them so that when they get ready to take the exam that qualifies them as TSI-ready, they'll be prepared. And so we're focusing some of that around our creative writing and mathematics. They're currently participating in art appreciation, PE, and then all the ninth grade high school requirements, that's what they're taking this school year. When they get to junior and senior levels, they will have dual credit and here's a list of some of the courses that students will be participating in as well as any of the other coursework that they can qualify for when they meet the standards that are related to TSI requirements. As you know, we'll be rolling out our STEM Academy at Martin High School next school year. Applications were due at the end of last month and so we're in the process of screening those right now. We have a very strong partnership with the University of Texas at Arlington in this endeavor and I just want to give kudos to Mr. Garcia and his team and all the teachers that helped design this, the principal at Martin High School and her team. They have worked very closely with UTA and have, and UT has committed courses. It's almost unknown to see universities really collaborate with the school district and give students courses or access to courses that are at the university level and provide them with a transcript afterwards. So our students that are participating in the STEM Academy will be part of a four-year high school program that are seeking specifically courses and careers in the STEM field and we're specifically around biology, biomedical science, computer and techno, technology and computer science, engineering, and the mathematics. And we're starting with our initial cohort of 100 students. Our program's projection, once it's all, everyone matriculates over four years, is 400 and it is a school of choice. And we believe, and I know you, you know this already, is that we believe that a quality STEM program at the high school will prepare kids for a STEM career. Then the, the incredible thing about the program that's being designed here in Arlington is, is, is like I was saying earlier, the relationship between UTA and the rigor that students will be engaged in as well as some of the professional mentorships and internships that kids have. Dr. Cavassos and I had the luxury the other day to sit in a classroom of students that were involved in some really credible internships at Lockheed Martin, for example, and to hear their, their comments about their experience and what they're going to do with their, their learning as they go on to their universities of choices is pretty profound and this academy allows us the opportunity to expand that opportunity to more students. Here's just an example of some of the coursework that's already been agreed upon between us and UTA and there are several, several more that are already underway. So, but this is a sample of the beginning courses. We'll also be working on expanding our languages other than English program. We will expand our world language clubs at the schools and then we'll also be expanding our FLESS programming in the district. So we're already working specifically, for example, with one elementary school to implement our StarTalk grant at one of their schools which would include Portuguese. So our goal is to expand that program over time and the world language department's in the process right now of designing a five-year plan that will help us kind of conceptualize how we want to go. And so this is one example of what we'll provide. Our goal is that every student in the district have an opportunity to have access to a second language. The third priority is inclusive education and really this is around three main areas. It's around providing inclusive services to students who have disabilities, to differentiate instruction for students in the classroom who are, who are learning English as a second language, and then also to design a robust and comprehensive response intervention system so that we can meet the needs of students who struggle in the tier-two or tier-three areas. Our beliefs around the inclusive education idea is that we believe that all kids can learn and they can be successful in the classroom. It's our job and our duty, our obligation to provide them with an opportunity to be, to have access to that curriculum through differentiated instruction. We also believe that students that are in a classroom from diverse backgrounds enrich the learning environment and so we want to encourage that. We also want to acknowledge the strengths and the needs of each student and inclusive setting allows us to do that and it also gives us a chance to be, be more proactive and, and more inclusive in providing our supports to students because they're not necessarily all going to a separate site outside of the general setting. More kids have access to those supports. And then we also believe that effective learning results from collaborative efforts, meaning adults from all backgrounds working with different types of students come together and collaborate around their expert knowledge so that we can, so that all students could actually benefit from that practice. When we think about rolling out inclusive education in the district and we've already started this month with Stetson specifically around the group of students who have disabilities, we believe some of the benefits around inclusive education is that students' performance in academics will be better. We do believe that it will, like I said, foster leadership development for our, our, our teachers and our principals and we also believe it will provide meaningful platform for us to truly differentiate to meet the needs of each of our students. Some of our goals with inclusive education is that we provide onsite technical assistance to staff, so what we don't want to do is create an inclusive setting but don't provide the resource, the resources or the access to, to assistance as you're, as you're implementing the inclusive practices in your classroom. So that includes staffing implications as well as providing support when it comes to scheduling strategies. We'll also be increasing the skills of campus leaders through our training that we've been providing. They, they're, they're going to three days of training over the course of the semester and then we have extensive summer training. And then we're also sending out or deploying in, support from experts in the inclusive education area, arena to each of the campuses and we're, so they get support, face-to-face support at their sites. Every campus will get that opportunity in the spring, this spring, while they're learning how to redesign their, their learning and then again in the fall when, when they come back to school and they have a new group of students. So we're trying to be, we're trying to provide a, some continuity to the quality of support that staff is receiving. And just as a point of note, we're not asking principals and teachers just to go to the training. The entire academic services team is attending these training, this training so that everyone, regardless of which department you're in, has the ability to speak to it and provide support to you. We also, our goal is to close achievement gaps and the reason why I highlight this is because you'll note at the beginning of the presentation that is, there is a significant gap between the quality performance that special education students are, are reaching and the level of performance that the general ed population's reaching, so we want to close that gap so that the, they're both achieving at similar levels. And then also we want to increase the district and department's capacity to, like I said, not only provide support but to provide the kind of support that's going to produce stronger outcomes for kids. So the themes around inclusive education that we're focusing are around are the instructional setting, what that looks like, how to collaborate meaningfully across departments to support students in that environment, how to differentiate instructionally for any student population that's sitting in your classroom, what kind of in-class support can a teacher expect to receive, how to maximize peer and family relationships among students and between students and their families to enhance their learning, and then how do we utilize our personnel at the district level and at campuses to facilitate that. We'll also be working on embedding PSYOP strategies. PSYOP is called Sheltered Instruction Observation Protocol and that's basically instructional practices or strategies around support, the support of students who are learning English as a second language. Classrooms that embed or instruction that embed PSYOP strategies are actually quite effective to increase student achievement and not only their language skills but also their understanding of academic content through comprehensible input. The neat thing about PSYOP is we know that students who are economically disadvantaged often come to school with, with a disadvantage with their vocabulary even simply because of the love, the quality of experiences they grew up with. And it's not because anybody is, is doing anybody any harm, it's simply the nature of having all these other challenges that your families are working through. And so by embedding PSYOP strategies into our curriculum documents, it will allow, and in our, in our training, it will allow us the opportunity to not only meet the needs of students who are struggling, who are English language learners, but also students who are economically disadvantaged. This, these are simply the components of the PSYOP training or the PSYOP strategies. We actually will provide training around lesson preparation, how to build backgrounds so people, so students can access their schema or their background knowledge to apply it in their current learning, how to make their learning comprehensible when they don't necessarily share the same language as the teacher, strategies, how to, how to maximize interaction students have with each other in the classroom, how to give them practice and opportunities to apply their new learning, and then delivery of instruction and then how do you assess it as we're going. As far as the curriculum audit, the other area that we are working on in, in this area of inclusive education is around our system, Response to Intervention system. And one of the audits recommendations was for us to develop a system for selecting, planning, implementing, monitoring, evaluating program interventions. So we provide all these interventions to students, how do we know which ones work, which ones don't work, and how do you design intervention in a way that actually meets the diagnoses? Meaning, we know specifically what's causing the students to struggle in their learning and how do we apply a remedy that's actually directly aligned to that, to that diagnosis? So we are going to be spending this next school year redesigning our, our Response to Intervention system. It will include universal screeners at the, actually, we'll have universal screeners specifically in reading K through eight and then we're, we're going to be working on finding ways to identify struggling readers even in high school and provide them with support. We will be working on identifying a system that is going to, our goal is to create a system that is electronic, meaning we're not tracking students with paper from school to school, that we can have some continuity for students as they go from school to school or if I, if I, if I, and if I leave this campus and then I enroll in another one the next week, the new school can actually pull up exactly where you were and apply the intervention. We will also be working on creating interventions, providing some support to the teams that apply RTI so that they will be able to diagnose very specifically, for example, what, if a child's struggling in reading, what is the building block of reading they're struggling with? And then here is a, a menu of options that you can choose to apply that remedy. And we will also be working to expand our dyslexia services program. We started that process last year with a new program called DIP and it's been very successful and so since we know that it's been successful, we intend to expand that and then also expand it to our English language learners, our, our non-English speaking students. Right now, we, that's one of the gaps that exists is students who are dyslexic, who speak Spanish as their primary language and are, are matriculating through our bilingual program, we want to service them because they have the same need. And then last but not least, our bond initiatives. You, the, you know that our bond, our election was specifically around some new facilities as well as some innovative programming, transportation, safety, security, and then our technology infrastructure. And so this is just a list of some of the programs and new facilities that we're working on now as we redesign our, our system and on, this will go on as you know for the next five years, but much of that work is very much underway and will consume much of our time as we, as we go through next school year.
That short presentation, Dr. Wertz? Thank you for that and I'll, I'll tell my colleagues, I know we still have some questions, but I know we plan to have finance and accountability review this as we keep going with this project as it keeps moving forward and, and decisions are made and keep a vetted interest so that then it comes back to us and we have updates as we come through. I think it's the, the plan for the process on this and, you know, as we've discussed it in the past, we've now moved from the ideas, the overall, the big rocks now to getting more and more into the sand as, and I know we're still at the rocks and there's many, many more layers of sand that'll come in around that. So I thank the staff for all that, but we'll, we will take some questions but know that we do have more board work to follow after, as we go on. Ms. Mays?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz, I appreciate that. And it's very fun because this is my second time sitting through this presentation. It's great. But it's good because it continues to give me a better understanding. One question I had was the universal screener for the Response to Intervention, are we going to use something similar to that to identify our talented and gifted or will it still be a, a personnel approach?
No, we are going to redesign our gifted and talented screeners because what's happening right now is there's some gaps in, across the district. We have some schools that have less than 1% that are gifted and talented identified and some that have 7% plus. And we know there's a state average and so statistically speaking, most schools should have, not, not guaranteed, but schools should have a certain threshold or about a certain number of students that fall in that category. So what we're going to be redoing is thinking about how can we more comprehensively identify students and not necessarily rely on nominations, although nominations will continue to be part of it. When it comes to scre, a universal screener, a universal screener is really designed to get a sense of how students are learning and what components of their learning is causing them to accelerate or, or causing them to struggle. If we were going to do a screener for, for a gifted and talented program, oftentimes those screeners are, come in multiple ways. And when you're dealing with really, really young children like kindergarten, a lot of districts will utilize a portfolio method where you, you have certain projects and then there are look-for's that you look for to see where gifted students kind of rise to the top, so to speak. And you would apply that opportunity to all students because you don't know who's gifted necessarily sitting in the classroom. And then you would maybe, you would do the same, another screener again at second grade and that screener would look something that's more of a nationally, you wouldn't use this as a, a way of, of qualifying, but as one way of identifying a student, you might look at a nationally norm reference type assessment like the COGAT where we would say, well, what students actually fall in the 90th percentile? Okay, what are their names so we can begin looking at, maybe we need to nominate those students to actually look further. And then of course we provide, we have the, the staff-based ones that you're referring to where we have nominations, where, where some students don't necessarily do very well in assessments and they're very gifted, so, or they're talented. And so we have, we will have alternate ways to identify those students as well. So to answer your question, we will be utilizing it, but the, the universal screener is not necessarily designed specifically for identification purpose of GT, although it could let, make you pause and think maybe I need to nominate if you have a student that's in first grade reading at a level 30, that's, that's, that's an example of someone who's very accelerated. It would cause you as a teacher to reflect on that.
Okay. Okay, so that's very good. So as we improve and start incorporating the new ways of identifying talented and gifted, then as they move forward to, let's say, junior high, currently if a parent says, I want my child to be, you know, in an advanced class, they can be. So are you going to align then the difference of there where you've been talented and gifted identified or you have not and now the mom says or dad says, hey, I want them to be in an advanced class because I think they can?
Yeah, and that's the thing too is we don't, if, if a student wants to be in an advanced placement course, for example, or an advanced course, we, we don't bar students from participating. The, the task around gifted and talented is, is the belief and the understanding that if you're a student who has gifts, you have needs just like a student whom has, is an ELL or a student who's special education. And so yes, we will make sure that alignment process happens. Our, our real goal right now, especially in the elementary ranks, is to ensure that the quality of our gifted program really speaks to the needs of the students and that it's, that they don't get lost in the mix. Yeah. But as they matriculate, yeah, through junior high and high school, yes, we will work through that, for sure.
Yeah, because I just see that as a plus as we're, you know, looking to improve our AP, IB, all the courses we want to accelerate. I mean, if we've already started in elementary, wow, what a great move into junior high and high school.
And as I was saying earlier, this is just one aspect, this is the beginning point for how we want to kind of transform elementary.
Yes. Okay, and then I had one more question. Let me find it. So just to make sure that I understand, I'm just going to repeat this very, very simply for me. I was looking at the very beginning when you said, here's what the data tells us and you identified a few things like the gaps. So as you were going through your presentation, I was looking to see, is there anything that we're incorporating in this that's addressing some of these gaps that we already have? And I think you hit pretty much every single one. My question for the last one is the students' achievement of college readiness and I know we've just started with our strategic plan implementing a lot of that, but are we also looking at a way that we're going to try to measure this, not only that we've prepared our students to go to college, but that they've actually gone, stayed, and graduated?
We have talked about that actually and we, I don't have an answer for you specifically tonight, but I will say we've actually had that discussion which is, there is the difference between the students that are prepared to go to college and the ones that, or, and the ones that actually enroll and stay. And so we, we have to find a way to track students to identify, in fact, did they actually stay in college and matriculate through the full four years and how, what timeframe they did. Right now, we don't have a measure in place to do that partly because, as you know, students are accepted to universities all across the country. But we have thought about, are there ways to survey our students, are there ways to keep, keep in touch with them to find out if that in fact does happen? So we've had that discussion. We haven't, we don't have a solid plan yet.
Right, right. And I can't give you the answer to do that, but I hope we continue to have that discussion because to me, that's a true measure of success. Not only did we prepare them, but they went and they stayed and they graduated.
Yeah, exactly.
But thank you for this.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. Ms. Penya?
Minor more comments. This is, this was wonderful presentation. There are a lot of things that you addressed that we are approaching and trying to resolve. You are the Energizer Bunny on something. I don't know what.
Water.
There is, there.
Why does everyone think people energetic are on something? Come on.
Well, that's. Well, that's because you, you presented the presentation that probably would have taken someone else hours to present. And there was a lot of work that went into this, and I really appreciate it. And, and I was glad, I did learn something, you know, have nieces and, and brothers and sister-in-laws and so on that are teachers, and for some reason, all their children, their personal children are gifted and talented. And, and there really is a measurement for it. I guess that, that I thought only teachers make that decision, because they are always telling me their kids are gifted and talented. And I was always thinking, how did you come to that conclusion? So, it's great to know we really have a measurement here in our district. The other thing is, I, one of the things I really, really liked about this presentation you gave was that there is a continuation of education, education and intervention for our students, because we need that consistency. We have a lot of economically disadvantaged students here, which means that they may be moving every six months from one house to another, or even less. And it will be as if they just didn't move, at least not educationally, given this plan. And I really was glad to see that, because we need to afford that to our students. And it's real important. And even if they went out of the school district, I wish there was a method that we could say, it doesn't matter. But we're not on a line in the state of Texas. I wish that we were, and I wish that the rest of the state of Texas was as good as the Arlington School District. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Penya. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, President Hogg. I was making notes as we went along. Could you go back to the beginning, the slide that Mrs. Mays was talking about, where the, here's where the data tells us?
Yes.
Gap between performance of students in bilingual and ESL programming. Now, is the gap between the bilinguals and the ESLs, or is the gap between bilingual and ESL and the general population?
Both. So, the, and, and that's the part I was highlighting. So, yeah, that's a good question. There, the bilingual students and the ESL, if you're a LEP student, well, a limited English proficiency student, your performance, the performance levels of that group tend to be less, where there, there's a gap between them and when you have the entire group together. But even among the bilingual and ESL students, if you just took the LEP students and you separated them into those two groups, meaning the students participate in the bilingual program, the students in the ESL programming, the bilingual students actually outperform the students in the English as a second language program. So, what we want to do is to apply strategies that will, one, close that gap, so that English language learners who are not in the bilingual setting can perform at least as well as their bilingual counterparts, and then that group, as well as the all subgroup.
Yeah, because I would expect that the bilingual students would do better than the straight ESL students, and you're agreeing with that?
They do.
Okay. I got ESL certified before I left GP, and it's interesting training. Big rocks. Go forward, but two. Okay. Data-driven. Every time I see something, I think, more work for the teachers to do. Tell me that's not true.
It's data-driven for us.
Who's going to give you the data?
What'd you say?
Who gives you the data?
Well, we have a department that does help us with that, so.
Where do they get their numbers?
From, we extract, oh, I see what you're saying. So, well, we will, I will say this. Our data actually, when we, when, I see what you're saying. Our, our, our data, when, when we, when we decided what our priorities were going to be, we used, there's different data sources that we could use. And not all of it comes from, not all of it comes from, say, interim assessments, meaning like curriculum assessments that teachers are administering, or even STAR assessments that teachers administer. Some of the data that we want to use as we continue through, through our time is other qualitative and quantitative data sources that we could help, use to help us identify whether we're actually being successful or not. We have several surveys that we use in the district that aren't even just related to teachers. We have students that we survey to learn about whether they are engaged in the classroom. We have parents that give us information. So, our goal, as we move through these, through this next several years in our work, is to utilize those data sources to do annual comprehensive needs assessment, to identify whether we should stay on track or make adjustments. But, yes, there is a component that does impact the teacher, teacher in the classroom, that's for sure.
Yeah, because my goal is to take rocks out of the teacher's pack and not put them in there. Okay. As you went through this, there's a whole lot of futuristic thinking, right?
Okay.
I mean, all of this is in the future, and we should not assume that any of this is done yet, except for the framework, right?
The, the work has begun on several of these items, but yes, it's not complete, and there's still lots of work to do. What I, what I wanted to articulate tonight was that as we, as we progress through the next school year, that you, I wanted to provide you with a framework and understanding of what our work was actually going to be.
So, this coming summer, teachers will be writing the new curriculum?
Will begin the process of writing curriculum.
Okay, and so, what curriculum will we start the 15, 16 school year with?
The areas that we'll begin writing are the ones that I noted earlier, which are the EOC courses, and then all the core content areas in K through eight, pre-K, pre-K through eight. The, the, the thing that we're still working on right now is the timeline for that writing, and when we would actually employ it, or, in the classrooms, because we want to be cognizant of the adults actually utilizing the curriculum. So, but those courses are where we're starting. And then also, just so that you know, the CTE program, they're also beginning that process.
So, realistically, we're going to start new curriculum next fall?
Portions of the curriculum. I'm, I'm, we're not at a place where we could say all of that will be ready for next fall, but the work will begin this spring, and portions of it will be implemented next fall.
And then everybody else will use, what's already in place this year?
Next school year. Yeah, next school year, we will have math that was rewritten, and they'll continue with that, and we'll revise that. And then we're also going to be revising some of the documents they're currently working with, just so that they can stay up to pace and be, you know, the quality continues to improve. But yes, next year, the curriculum documents for the teacher will look the same as this year, for all intents and purposes.
Okay, and all of this online?
Yes, this is all online.
We're going to publish it and sell it?
Say again?
Will we publish it and sell it?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
We already have one of our curriculum guides that we copyright.
Yeah. Where does the textbook come into all of this?
Well, one of the things that we, the textbook is, is a resource. So, what we're trying, what we will be doing, and especially in our training and professional learning, is when we design the document, when teachers access the document, one of the resources that are available will be components of the textbook. One of the biggest misunderstandings is that the textbook, if you teach it cover to cover, you'll cover all the standards. The actual state requirement for textbook companies to make, make the list for possible adoption is that 50% of their textbook have to be aligned to the standards. Well, we know that 50% is not good enough for our students. So, what we do, as a curriculum department, is we look at the curriculum we're trying to teach and how we bundle the units, and then we look at the resource, and the resources we can use to actually deliver that instruction, one of which is the textbook. And we identify in the textbook which pieces we recommend the teacher use, and we, and, and we don't, we don't recommend everything. So, we literally will tell, like, for example, if you were to look at the math document, we will tell you which piece, which chapters to use, and which pages to use, and, and we don't include all of them, because we don't believe that everything in the entire textbook is what we want to utilize in the classroom. And that's a misconception, because I think, when we all grew up, our teachers taught that way, a lot, oftentimes from cover to cover. If we do that, our students will experience significant gaps. So, it's one of many resources, it's one tool in the tool belt.
Very good. So, not only are all the teaks not covered in the textbook, but it's also not in the right order. Is that correct?
Correct. And we, well, we get to decide, we, as, when a textbook company, as you know, writes textbooks, they, textbook companies typically market towards certain states, because there's more of us. And so, what we try to do when we write our curriculum document is to look at all the standards the state requires that we teach, and then bundle them together in ways that we feel makes sense for our students. And then we take the textbook and we, we apply that into our, our sequence. So, yes, we, it, it does go out of order. What our task is, and this is a good example this year, which I think you referred to, Dr. Rice, is, is to go back to the teachers. First of all, teachers will help us write, so they can help us make sure that we're going in the right order. But then also, go back to the teachers after we've written and, and ask them for your feedback. Did this feel like it worked? Or does it not work? And then make some adjustments along the way.
Okay. You spoke about content and process. Can I add one more thing to that?
Sure.
Shortlist, is that, when am I ever going to use this? Students always ask that, and as an experienced teacher, you can wing it. But as a new teacher, a lot of times, you have to say, I don't know, or never. And if we could stick that in the curriculum, you know, when am I going to use this, it might help them bridge that gap from content knowledge to useful knowledge.
Well, and I think our task, when we write the curriculum itself, and we provide exemplars to teachers, is to do what you were describing to, Dr. Rice, is to give examples of how they're applying their learning in the real-world context as part of the learning process. So, instead of, so that we, if we're doing it the right way, in my opinion, students would never need to ask that question, because the actual learning process will tell them how they're going to use it. They will have used it in a real-world study. But that's our task to do. Yeah.
Now, are we writing curriculum for just the core courses, or for everything?
We write the curriculum for some. We don't write it for everything. Like, there's certain, like AP, for example, has a curriculum, IB has their curriculum.
Okay. You're doing pretty good. Met standard. I guess this might have been already answered. On the gifted and talented screener business, if we develop a new screener, are we going to screen kids that are in second, third, fourth grade? Or are we just going to start with the little ones?
Well, and I think it's important, we're not going to develop a screener, we're going to adopt a screener that's utilized to help us with, with identifying students. And there are some methods for doing, like Kinder, like I said, is portfolios. But if you were going to adopt a screener that, and we already use one here, we use COGAT in grades three and six. What we have to do is, we have to decide, and, and that's, that's used for multiple purposes. One purpose is, if we can, we can actually look and see what percentile kids fall in, it gives us an idea of which ones may be gifted. I think the task that we have to think about is, when we decide to design our program, which grade levels we feel are the most strategic places to actually apply a screener to all kids. Some, you want to identify kids, as you know, gifted as early as possible. But sometimes giftedness doesn't necessarily, you don't, for some reason, doesn't, you don't see it until it gets, the students grow and, and, and develop. So, there's that task. And then our, our other goal that we're considering when we redesign is, how do we identify kids who have potential giftedness, who may not necessarily fall in the 90th percentile, but who are really high performers and would do very well in that environment? So, our goal is to find those as well, so we can accelerate them. So, to answer your question, we aren't designing the screener, but we would adopt one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Every parent wants their kids to be gifted. Every parent thinks their kids are gifted. And having spent most of my life in high school, it's easy for me to tell a student to, you should be in AP. You should take at least an AP math course, for example. Are elementary teachers on that same boat, that they can say, hey, Mom, your son or daughter is gifted?
Yeah, and that's part of the nomination, the nomination phase. What we have to do is, you know, in, in the gifted program, anybody can nominate a child. It could be a parent, it could be a neighbor, it could be anybody they can nominate. The thing that we are trying to think about, though, is in our training, is how to teach teachers how to identify giftedness when they see it. Sometimes there, there's little things that kids will do, or they, they'll, you'll notice in their performance that will cue you, that there's a possibility for a giftedness, and you want to do a nomination. So, that's part of our, part of our task, yes.
Okay. You mentioned dyslexic and Spanish. I guess the other day at the PDC, we learned that there's a significantly lower percentage of Spanish students who, Spanish-speaking students who are diagnosed as dyslexic. Can you tell us why?
Well, I think part of the, as far as being diagnosed for dyslexia.
Sure, by us.
I think part of it may be the way that our system is designed right now. We don't, we don't have support systems in place, really, for that right now, which is part of the reason why we're not necessarily looking for it. You know, if, you, we don't have a tool to actually assist us, which is why we're embedding what the program's called Esperanza. And it's, it's a, it's a program designed specifically for students who, works with students who have dys, dyslexia, who are Spanish. So, I, I think part of the reason is that we don't, we, it's not necessarily being looked for. And so, it's, it's difficult to screen for something and not necessarily have a, a remedy. When students struggle in the classroom with reading, one of the things that we would look for as part of RTI, if you really feel like they're struggling with dyslexia, is you would screen them, and with a tool, because there's a program to apply remedy. Right now, the, our screening process, we don't have, we don't have a tool. So, the Esperanza program, which we will actually have next school year for, for some of our sites, as we're, we'll have to do it gradually, will help us with that process. Yeah.
I think that's it. Thank you, Dr. Wirth. Thank you, President Hogg.
Thank you, Mr. Barron.
Ms. Solms, I know your follow-up, that's a good one.
Hi. Mr. Barron got my question on textbooks, in particular. And this is a small follow-up to it. I understand, and, and thank you for your explanation, why textbooks aren't, as they traditionally have been, one-to-one distribution, and we start at chapter one and end at chapter 20. And, but, you know, I hear a lot from teachers, it's very difficult to, to pull those pieces together now. So, will the new document and the new system that you're putting make that easier for them to get the information they need in their hands and not knit it together themselves in the classroom?
Well, our task with the new curriculum document is for us to highlight the resources, specifically where in the textbook they'll be able to, what, what to use and what not to use. So, and by I say not what not to use, we simply just don't highlight it in the curriculum. So, will we be able to take pages literally out of the textbook and put them in the curriculum? That we can't do that because of copyright, but what we can do is reference them, so they know exactly where to go in their teacher edition, or in the, in the student handbooks to utilize with kids.
So, is it going to be something like a table of content mapping?
In our curriculum documents?
Yes.
It will say something like, it'll say, "Resources," and then it will literally give them a, a list of resources to use. Like, it would say, "This textbook, these three pages," or, "This workbook, these two pages." We'll tell them specifically which resource to go to, and which pages, pages to find it in. And in online, and in online resources, we, we hyperlink it.
We can't be the only district facing this, and it's a statewide issue. Is this the, do you see this, this is the solution that most districts are using?
Yeah, I, as far as not going cover to cover.
Not, no, not, not going cover, cover to cover is how to facilitate the teacher's ability to access that easier.
Yeah.
Where they're not having to go through kind of a mapping process. The document is a mapping process, it sounds like, that's going to tell them where to go.
Yeah.
But it's, they, they still have to go to this, this item and that item, and pull it all together.
In the districts that I'm familiar with, that's, that's been the case, where the actual document itself highlights what resources to go to and what, what portions to use. The, so, yes, to answer your question.
Thank you. I don't, I'm on the Finance and Accountability Subcommittee, so, any other questions, we can catch up on that.
Okay, okay.
Ms. Penya?
I just have one question.
Okay.
With dyslexia, you said that if, that you find that the student has trouble reading, then one of the testing factors you look for is, is in the dyslexia. Students have find a good way of hiding things, or finding, discovering methods of getting around.
Sure.
Problems. I, I went and read to a child, or the child read to me perfectly, perfectly, but did not comprehend what they were reading. It would be one or two words, they had no clue what it meant. It's in Spanish, you could see the light go off.
Sure.
That, when they finally understood. In dyslexia, can they hide it? Can they, are they able to find a way around it, that you've got to dig deeper to find out what the problem is?
Dyslexia is, is, socially, they can try to hide. I think dyslexia students often socially will find ways around working through their content, so that they don't feel, they feel socially accepted. The actual act of reading, dyslexia is very much about the act of reading. So, kids that are engaged in services around dyslexic services are literally learning how to put sounds together and formulate words. So, a teacher who reads with a student, if a student's struggling with reading, we don't automatically jump to the fact that they're dyslexic. We provide all sorts of remedies, but there will be things that will trigger you to think that there's maybe a possibility that we might want to do a screening. And students, for example, if you're a second grade student, and you're, and you, you've been in school for the, the full two years, and you've received interventions and interventions, and you're still at a place where you're trying to put letters and sounds together, that might cause us to want to think about maybe screening you for dyslexia. But a student who has dyslexia, severe dyslexia, who really struggles with reading, I don't know that, and I, and there may be some students that are, that are outliers, but I don't know that a dyslexic student who really struggled with reading can- who has dyslexia, severe dyslexia, who really struggles with reading, I don't know that, and I, and there may be some students that are outliers, but I don't know that a dyslexic student who really struggles with reading can hide the fact that they're struggling with reading because it's, it's very pronounced. But there's different levels of dyslexia.
I think that they can. I have a brother who had dyslexia, and he hid it till 10th grade.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think there's...
He found ways around it.
Yeah. I think there's ways for kids to socially work through the system without being, having necessarily identified. And I think the range of dyslexia, just like dysgraphia, it varies from students. Some are very severe and some have to slight, it's just slightly. But kids will socially find their way through the system. I think that's why it's so imperative that our teachers spend time working with students in small groups, one-on-one, often, because you get to hear kids read and read with them. But yes, there are definitely students who find their way through the system. Our task is to make sure that that doesn't happen so we can support them.
So he ended up being a teacher because of that.
Good for him. That's great. Yeah.
Dr. Rice.
Thank you, President Hogg. Just a couple of short ones. I wanted to expand a little bit on Ms. Solins' comments and questions on other districts and your experience with them, and that they are doing similar things. Our strategic plan is to be globally acknowledged premier. So I know there's all kinds of elements in here, but I don't know which ones are the ones that are unique to us to make that separation and that distinction, to be a premier. Can you give us kind of an idea of what is new, incredible concepts that are innovative to the degree that nobody else is doing it?
Well, I think if you think, there's several things. I can just kind of thumb through here. Hold on. When it comes to tier one instruction, we're really at the place where we're trying to build some foundation work across the district in ways that are meaningful. When I think of our works around, our work around college and career readiness, I think there are some things that are definitely unique. We have our STEM Academy, our early college high school. But even if you think about it in terms of our gifted and talented program, depending on how we choose to design it, it really could be a standout. There are, there are several models when it comes to gifted and talented. There's the push-in model where a teacher pushes in. There's a pull-out, which you've probably seen many places where a child's pulled out of the classroom for a couple hours a week around a project. But there are models where students are actually engaged in gifted and talented instruction in a self-contained environment, where they are enriched 100% of the time in meaningful ways. I think there are ways we can go about it. It's our choices that are going to make that one as a standout. I also think our expansion of a LOPE program across the district is something that's very unique. I think it, we have, I have yet to see a district where every student in the district has access to learning and mastering a second language. Our goal over the next several years is to provide that access to all students, even in the elementary ranks. So you don't have to wait till high school to learn a language. You have access to that process as early as, well, we have to decide which area in the elementary grades, but as early as a primary grade in elementary school. So I feel like those are some things that are different. Another one is our STEM labs. When I come back to share with you specifically how the STEM lab is being used, that's very unique. I don't know a single district across, well, anyone that I have encountered, I'm not saying they don't exist, that I've encountered where every school has been, has an opportunity to have two in your, in your, in your school, and they're not science labs. They're intentionally designed to facilitate STEM learning in the, in the classroom at the elementary level. To me, that's something that puts us on the map. When it comes to like, I've been thinking about that whole concept of, actually with my team, we taught, we talked about the very thing yesterday. What makes a globally recognized premier district? And part of it, there's the premier side, and then there's the globally recognized and acknowledged. And part of the globally recognized and acknowledged is going to be our task to make sure that we have constituents around the world who understand what we're doing, that we interact and interface with, so that we publicize it in some ways, and then we grow and learn from one another. So I think there, the, the work around our quality tier one and the work that we're doing around the college and career readiness are things that are going to make us premier. I really feel like they're going to make us premier. And it's us taking it to the other, our constituents around the globe that I think are going to make us recognized. And that's something that we have to think about in our plan. That, to be frank, we're actually going to be doing in my team as we start designing what, what kind of, what do we want to do in the next five years? And how do we actually accomplish the vision that you've set for?
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. And, and I know with the, the curriculum audit and our goals with the strategic plan were to look globally.
Sure.
Try to benchmark ourselves, not just against premier national, but also what's considered maybe state-of-the-art in, in other areas of the world. So I really appreciate hearing that. With the, the language implementation, and I'm not going to hold you to this at all.
Okay.
But, and I know this is all very early development, but you said, you know, with the, the language implementation, that that would be over several years. And that's one of the things that will get us to a premier status. So any idea is, in your mind, is that three years, five years, is a 10-year plan? What are we looking at?
Well, I've been actually working with, with the World Language Department around that. Because if I'm being very honest, that's one of my biggest passions. So what can we do to really bring that to the forefront? Because I really feel like for any student that's in our world today, you need that skill. So I've seen an initial draft of a five-year plan that came forth from the World Language Department. I suspect to do it really, really well, to be honest, I think it's going to take more than five years because I'm much more interested in quality than just throwing it out there. So we're going to be, we're going to work through a process that actually would implement this over time. I'm not talking a decade of time, but five, six, seven years to really implement it well. But when we, but I, and I, we'll, we'll come, when we have details around the specifics, I can, I can speak to it more. But our vision for this idea is much bigger than the idea of like, everyone goes to a specialist class and learns Spanish. We're talking about a much more expansive idea because if kids are going to really master a language, they need time around it. So five, six, seven years is kind of the rough idea of kind of where we're at.
Okay.
One, I did want to say one thing in reference to globally recognized too, that I think is important to note. We are in the process of beginning of looking at where our students compare to other students around the globe. Our high school students, we have groups of students at each of the high schools that will engage in a, in a, an assessment this spring, where we will receive data that will tell us, how do Arlington High School students compare to students of the similar age group and background around the globe? And it'll give us, it's the first time we've ever been able to see, like, where are we in comparison to our global neighbors? So I'm really excited about that. That's brand new. We're just initiating this spring.
And with that initiation, is that going to cause friction with our other assessments or accountability?
Oh, no. No, and it doesn't, we don't assess every student. It's a cohort, it's a, it's a sample population.
Okay.
And it's our first round, and so we're going to try it out and see how it goes and get feedback. And then we're in dialogue about how to utilize that assessment data to actually inform our decisions and make choices. So it's our first stab at it.
And seeing you said that, what, do you have an idea of what cohort you're looking at? Are you going to look at our top IB and AP kids?
No. It's actually a cohort of ninth graders. That's, that's a group that's tested across the globe for standardization. But, and then they pick a random sample to make sure it's randomized.
Oh, yeah, correct.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Sure.
I know we'll have much more questions, and I'm glad we've got one of our committees on this too. Thanks.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Dr. Wertz, rest your feet. You're good. Thank you.
Okay. Is that it? Okay. Y'all have a great night.
Don't tempt fate, Dr. Wertz.
Bowie. President Hogg.
Yes, ma'am, Miss Mayes.
Can I just say one thing before he sits down?
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
No, no, a comment, just to piggyback off of his question to you about being a globally premier school district. Part of that, just as I said before, is all the programs that are being implemented. As you're tracking these students that are participating in all these programs and the success that they have once they leave our schools, that's how you prove how you're a globally premier district, by saying, "Look at the results of how it has impacted the students that have left the district."
Sure.
You're on the right path.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Perfect.
Okay.
Dr. Wertz, sit down. Thank you.
Please.
Quickly, quickly, quickly. It's back. Lots more. Thank, seriously, thank you, Dr. Wertz and your entire team for that hard work. We know how much goes into it on that. Next, we move to open forum for agenda items. This is the second open forum segment of the meeting. Provides citizens with the opportunity to address trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Directorial comments aimed at individuals will not be tolerated. I have four cards this evening from our audience. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You'll have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate. When there's one minute left for you to complete your presentation, when the red light comes on, the buzzer sounds, please enter presentation. I'll read out the four names just so everyone knows which order. I've got first, Judy Gelfert, second, Alyssa Taylor, third, Rachel Spain, and four, Jose Flores. Up first is Ms. Gelfert. Good evening, Judy.
Hey, Dr. Cavazos and members of the board. I am Judy Gelf, Judy Gelfert, excuse me. And like many of the people here in this room tonight, I'm a parent of children in AISD. Since the very beginning of my children's lives, their education has been of the utmost importance to my husband and me. No parent is perfect, but I can assure you, we have made it a priority to read to our kids, talk with our kids, limit screen time, encourage creative play and time outside, and make them feel loved and secure. I know we're not unique in this respect. It's only natural for parents to take an interest and want to do everything possible to provide a healthy, solid education for their children, beginning at home and eventually at school. We all, as parents, hugged our five-year-olds and bravely sent them off to kindergarten, putting trust in our school leaders to care for our children and teach them valuable lessons for the next 13 years, academic and moral. Around six weeks ago, the experienced, beloved principal of their elementary school was there one day and gone the next, throwing everyone, parents, teachers, and children into shock and disbelief. All affected were heartbroken, but especially our children. That incident was a wake-up call. Many parents like myself were suddenly full of questions and realized from one day to the next that we absolutely had not been paying attention to who was making decisions regarding our children's education. We felt an acute need to get informed and involved. Arlington Coalition for Excellence in Education, ACEE, is the result of this need for being in touch and feeling engaged in our school district. We want this to be in an unofficial meeting place for parents and faculty of AISD, as well as elected board members. We want citizens to feel free to ask questions, and we want to help find the quickest path to finding answers. When problems do arise, we want to help identify them and facilitate a quick resolution. We owe it to our children to be informed and to get involved and to stay invested. Because Arlington is a big city and we are all busy families, finding places for healthy, important discussion can be difficult. But that is the beauty of Facebook, and I believe this is a positive, is a positive thing. In closing, I just want to read a simple quote by Nelson Mandela. "A good leader can engage in a debate frankly and thoroughly, knowing that at the end, he and the other side must be closer and thus emerge stronger." Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Up next, we have Alyssa Taylor.
Hello. I just want to say before I read what I was going to say that this is a beating for y'all to come here and do this every month. So I'm really, I have a newfound respect twice a month.
That's what we're elected to do, Ms. Taylor.
Y'all are great. I really have to say that because it's been very interesting. I've learned a whole lot. I want to come back. But it's, it's a lot of information and a lot of time, so.
You can also watch any board meeting online, any of the previous ones also.
I know.
Any night you need rest.
And they're always about this long, aren't they?
Not usually. Sometimes.
Sometimes. Sometimes longer. Well, it's okay. It's very good.
We'll start our time now, Ms. Benjamin. Sorry about that.
That's okay. So, Dr. Cavazos, ladies and gentlemen of the board, my name is Alyssa Taylor, and I'm a founding member of the ACEE also, the Arlington Coalition for Excellence in Education. I'm a lifelong Arlington resident, almost 40 years. I attended Arlington Public Schools, and I currently have three children enrolled at Hill Elementary, and I am coincidentally the PTA president. That's why I had open house and Hill shirt. I wanted to take a few moment, a few more minutes to provide you with information about the ACEE, our purpose and our desire to support you, and most importantly, support our kids. Just to be clear, we are not a group of drama mamas looking to point fingers and cause problems for you. Most of us grew up here and attended AISD schools and want our kids to have the same valuable education that we received. And we have all been mostly happy. Things have been rocking along just fine in our world. But that all came to a crashing halt in February when two AISD employees left their positions midweek without any explanation to parents. After that, many questions arose. And parents started to contact the district either by email, phone, or written letters. We were some of those parents. Some of us are still awaiting a response from administration. It seems crazy to us that there is not some sort of a communication process in place when an upset like that happens. By answering with silence, it causes people to speculate that there was some wrongdoing somewhere. Many parents, including some of us, have requested open records through the Freedom of Information Act on the two cases from February. Once again, we've been greeted with stalling and silence. We did finally receive an email response back, and we were told that the redacted information would be sent to the Attorney General for approval. We are just kind of waiting and wondering when and if we're going to be able to get these records and if, what's hiding in them. Again, as you know, by not sharing information, it definitely looks like there's something to hide. As most of you probably know, the eight by now, the ACEE opened a Facebook page two weeks ago. We now have 1,200-plus members. That confirms to us that we are not the only people with questions. We have heard from parents, grandparents, teachers, administrators, all who are wanting the same things from our district, the transparency that we keep hearing about. Just a few of the hot topics are, why are there so many mid-year vacancies in the district? Why do our kids have more testing days than the state requires? Where are we really on common core? Why is the overall morale down according to the latest employee survey? But the overwhelming concern is the lack of communication from administration. So that leads us to you, the board. When we wrote letters to you, most of you answered. Some of you even met with us to hear our concerns, which we very much appreciate. Our goal is to work with you and not against you. That begins with trust and accountability between the board, the administration, and the parents. Concerning the upcoming election, the three incumbents should have received an email from me personally today with a list of questions. We ask that you take a little time to answer these questions and get back to us on them. If you choose not to, that is your right. But please know that we do plan to post these questions and responses on our page with answers from the new candidates as well. There will be no bias placed on anyone. This is simply a place for people to become informed and learn more about each of you. Lastly, I would like for you to know that we are very passionate in this endeavor. We all have children from infants to high school, seniors, right now. And we will not, and we will be around for these parents for a long time. You should get used to seeing us at these meetings more often. If you will help us, the ACEE can be a very positive voice for the district. Again, we are not here to cause problems. We are asking for your support to establish clear transparency and communication between the administration, its teachers, and parents to make the AISD a globally acknowledged premier district. Thank you for your time.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Up next, we have Rachel Spain.
She's not here.
I would say I don't, I didn't see Rachel sitting out there. So we'll go to, up next, Mr. Jose Flores. Mr. Flores, good evening.
Buenas noches. Necesito que me traduzca.
Perfect.
Me llamo Jose Flores. Soy padre de familia de alumnos del distrito escolar.
Jose Flores, he's a parent of one of the students here in the district.
Yo vine aquí la primera vez a platicar con ustedes en octubre del 2013 para presentarme como un miembro de una organización comunitaria que queríamos apoyar al distrito escolar y trabajar en algunos casos con la comunidad.
He came here in October of 2013 to talk with the board about, as a community member and advocate for in the community.
Para el día de hoy a las seis de la tarde tenemos programada una protesta aquí afuera de esta oficina porque no hemos sido escuchados por parte del distrito escolar y me encargaron que enseñara...
Earlier today at six o'clock, they were going, they had a protest. ¿Tuvieron una protesta?
No, teníamos preparado una protesta.
They had, they had prepared a protest here, here around six o'clock this evening that they didn't do, but they were going to.
Pero el señor este Peralles nos pidió que no lo hiciéramos y a cambio nos ofreció una entrevista con el doctor Cavazos para la próxima semana.
And Aaron Peralles was able to speak with them and asked that they give him an opportunity to speak with Dr. Cavazos next week.
Sin embargo, mis compañeros me pidieron que mostrara algunas señales para que ustedes las vieran de lo que la gente está pensando.
Some of his constituents asked that he please just display some of the signs so that you could see them this evening.
Y tienen que ver con que, como comenté, en el 2013 venimos a platicar y el doctor Cavazos nos asignó al señor Peralles para que platicara con nosotros.
In 2013, he came and Dr. Cavazos directed or invited him to have a conversation with Mr. Peralles, which he... Mr. Perales, which he did.
Nos reunimos muy emocionados, varios padres de familia, varios empresarios del área hispana, y varios alumnos del Distrito Escolar con el doctor Perales.
And he, along with several of his constituents in the community and students, met with Mr. Perales.
Platicamos sobre diversos temas, pero solo últimamente nos fijamos en tres temas importantes.
They talked about many things, and they specifically talked around three ideas or three themes.
Uno de ellos, el más importante, es que nuestra comunidad tiene problemas porque no tiene documentos que sean aceptados por escuelas del Distrito Escolar para identificación cuando van a levantar a sus hijos.
They talked about many themes. One that was important was that many of them have documents that they feel, being foreign parents, they have documents that they feel or believe are not being accepted by schools as forms of identification.
Para eso nosotros hicimos varias pláticas, incluso trajimos al representante, el embajador de México, a una de las pláticas, y él...
They had several discussions, and with them, they brought someone from the embassy, the Mexican embassy, with them to one of their discussions.
Y él presentó un documento en el cual valora el documento que el Consulado Magicano expide, incluso está siendo aceptado por el Distrito Escolar de Fórbol.
He brought the representative from the embassy brought a document that verified the validity of the documents that they would use, or the identification documents that they would use to share with the schools.
Sin embargo, este documento no ha sido aceptado. El señor Perales nos dice que hasta el momento el Distrito Escolar no tiene una orden para todas las escuelas, y que solamente esa discreción del director de la escuela si lo acepta o no.
He says, even so, they're still not being accepted by some of the schools, and that Mr. Perales had told them that there is no directive that the schools have to accept them, that they are at their own discretion.
El último caos que tuvimos con ese problema fue el mes pasado cuando un día de frío el Distrito Escolar decidió terminar las clases temprano.
One of the most recent cases where this came up was recently when we had our weather days and classes were canceled midday.
Ms. Benjamin, just if you double the time since we're translating, I'd appreciate that.
Varios padres de familia llegaron por sus niños, pero sus niños no les fueron entregados porque no traían un documento válido, por ejemplo, en escuelas como la escuela Thornton, por ejemplo.
So, many of the students vinieron a la escuela en la mañana?
Los padres vinieron por los alumnos.
Oh, the parents came to retrieve their children, but they were not able to, the school did not release their children to the parents because of the document that they showed them. They didn't accept the form of identification that was shown. This happened at Thornton.
Tuvieron que pasar a la oficina, tuvieron que identificarse, tuvo que venir la mamá también con ellos para que los niños les fueran entregados.
They had to go to the office, and they had to identify themselves, and in some cases, the students had to identify the parents for the...
Nosotros estamos de acuerdo con los programas de seguridad y los apoyamos, pero la gente que no tiene documentos solamente puede acceder a una matrícula consular.
They are in support of the safety measures and security measures that we have in here in the district, but parents who don't have documents...
Que no tienen documentos, ¿qué? Solo pueden tener una matrícula consular que expide el consulado.
Oh, they can only, they can only get the documents from the consulate office. That's where they have to go.
Quisieramos pedir que está fuera reconocida. Si ustedes quieren, podemos traer al mismo embajador para que hable aquí con ustedes sobre la validez del documento para que no haya este problema.
He exhorted the district to accept these forms of documents, and if it need be, they can have the ambassador come himself to actually speak to the validity of the documents so they can be accepted and that this problem doesn't continue.
Es una situación importante porque cuando yo, si yo quiero ir por mi hijo a sacarlo temprano de la escuela, no me lo entregan porque no tengo un documento válido.
He said, "This is really important because if he goes to a school to take his child out of class early, they will not release the child to him because he doesn't have a valid document."
La otra situación tiene que ver con la situación migratoria, que aunque no es un problema de la escuela, sí involucra al Distrito Escolar.
The other situation involves a migration, una situación migratoria?
Sí, que no es un problema de la escuela pero que sí involucra porque los alumnos son indocumentados.
Oh, another situation he's describing is not a problem specifically around the school district, but it does involve the school districts because it involves students who are undocumented.
Hace dos años, el gobierno implementó un programa que se llama DACA, que es un permiso para los muchachos que no tienen documentos.
A couple of years ago, the district implemented, el Distrito Escolar implementó?
El gobierno.
Oh, the government implemented a new program called...
DACA.
DACA, which was designed specifically around students who don't have documents.
Se pensaba que en Texas iban a ser alrededor de 1,800, pero hasta ahorita van solo 500,000 los que han aplicado.
They thought at first it would be 1.8 million students that it would affect, but up to today, cuántos?
500,000.
There's 500,000 who's applied so far.
Nosotros como padres de familia y como activistas sabemos que uno de los principales problemas es que los muchachos no tienen dinero para pagarle a un abogado para el proceso.
Part of the problem is that our students don't have the money to pay for an attorney that would allow them to participate in the program, the government program.
Hemos hablado en las reuniones con el señor Perales de que queremos hacer un evento gratuito, sin cobrar nada, para los muchachos.
He spoke recently with Mr. Perales about having an event that would allow the students to participate free of charge.
Es un evento diferente a un foro, porque en un foro va un abogado, da una explicación, y luego lleva a la gente su bufete y allá le cobra.
He said, "This event would allow an attorney to be present. They would have a forum, and then give the students the information, allow them to go to him where they could access the program."
Está en la oficina.
And then make payment to the office.
Lo que nosotros, lo que nosotros queremos hacer es gratis. A las reuniones han ido dos abogados, aquí tengo la información de ellos, dos abogados reconocidos que quieren dar información gratis, ayudar gratis a los muchachos sin cobrar nada.
He has information about two attorneys who are willing to host this event and give information to the students free of charge.
Pues hasta ahorita ya van a ser dos años, y no tenemos respuesta de esta situación que es muy importante y urgente para los muchachos.
It's been two years, and they're still waiting for an answer on how to address this problem pertaining to students.
Sin embargo, algunas escuelas sí llevan abogados, que dan pláticas a los muchachos, y luego los abogados los invitan a que vayan a su oficina, y ahí en su oficina sí les cobra.
And so, nonetheless, they can still send attorneys to the school to speak with the students, and the students can then go to the attorney's office where he would charge them there, but the actual information would be free.
Lo que nosotros estamos proponiendo es gratis, completamente gratis. Tenemos abogados gratis y queremos ver de qué manera podemos ayudar a nuestros alumnos que también son los alumnos del Distrito Escolar.
He's saying the proposal they're making is something that's completely free to everyone, including the students, and it would be a service also to the district.
Un último punto nada más tiene que ver también con migración.
The last point that he wants to make has to do with immigration.
Los muchachos que no tienen seguro social, todos sabemos...
The students who do not have a social security number?
No pueden estacionar su carro en el parking de las escuelas porque no pueden llenar el papel para tener el permiso de estacionarse.
They can't park their cars in school because they can't acquire the pizza paper that's needed.
Tienen que estacionarlo dos o tres cuadras cuando llueve, cuando nieve.
They have to park two or three blocks away, and when it's raining and it's snowing.
Nosotros entendemos los asuntos de seguridad y los respetamos...
We understand and respect the security measures in place.
Pero queremos que nos ayuden a que nuestros hijos no sean señalados y reconocidos como indocumentados.
But that we want, he's soliciting the district to help them make sure their students aren't identified or pointed out as someone who's undocumented.
Con el solo hecho de entrar mojados o con nieve o venir sudando del camino donde dejaron su carro.
And coming into the school wet and sweaty or, you know, cold from having to leave their car far from the school.
Nada más repito lo del principio, la protesta que el día de hoy se iba a hacer...
Just want to repeat that the protest was going to be today.
Fue porque empezamos haciendo buenas reuniones cada mes.
We started having good, it started because we've been having good meetings every month.
Pero la última reunión que tuvimos fue en octubre del año pasado.
That the last meeting we had was in October of last year.
No hemos tenido reuniones ni comunicación con el señor Perales.
We haven't had any more meetings or communication with Mr. Perales.
Solo tuvimos un intento el mes pasado, pero no se llevó a cabo.
We only had the intent, it was supposed to happen last month, but it didn't come to be.
Y nosotros estamos preocupados por si de verdad el Distrito Escolar quiere atender nuestras demandas.
And we are concerned whether the district's actually going to address our concerns or our demands.
Quiero dejar una copia de los documentos al doctor Cavazos.
He wants to leave a copy of the documents with Dr. Cavazos.
Para el asunto de migración, la persona que nos da asesoría es el señor Jesús Ramírez.
With concern of the immigration, the individual that's assisting is Jesús Ramírez, a community relations officer with the US-CIS Dallas District.
Gracias por su atención.
Thank you for your attention.
Gracias, Mr. Flores. Thank you, Mr. Works. And Dr. Cavazos leaned over there, having a meeting and discussing. Thank you. Up next, we have superintendent's report. Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you, President Hogg, and I'd like to share some information about our school district. It'll come up here in the screen, hopefully. Recently, Martin High School hosted the Regional Academic Decathlon, a competition in February, and Arlington High ACTEC team won first place in that competition. And so, they advanced at a recent competition, and again competed, and they competed now at the state level against 477 other students from across the state. And Arlington High did very well in this competition as well and received first place in many categories. One of the students finished 16th overall in the state after winning first in science, fourth in math, and art, and fifth in music. And I want to congratulate the ACTEC team and UCM up there from Arlington High School. The Destination Success 2015 was held at San Houston High School in February, and that provided free sessions to prepare for college, understanding the cost of college, financial aid, the application process, SAT and ACT preparation. As you see in the picture there, I don't know if you can tell, but that's Nell Fielding, our Director of Counselors, who is presenting one of the sessions upon, for parents and students about financial assistance, House Bill 5, and things like that. So, thank you, San Houston High School, for hosting that and for all the volunteers that were part of that. I would like to take a moment to thank everyone at Corey Elementary and Moore Elementary and Bolts Junior High for their help here in early March when Moore did not have any electricity. And so, all the students went from Marymore to Corey for a couple of days there, and the staff there was outstanding, both the Marymore and Corey staff. A true demonstration of working together, two different schools, and they did very well. And Bolts staff for helping us in terms of housing students as well. We appreciate the teamwork in these schools and this network in particular, so I want to thank them again publicly. Owlsley Junior High recently held their picnic with parents, and those are staff members that are pictured up there, and it's the 13th year for that picnic with parents. It was very well attended. This is an event that Owlsley Junior High does and invites the parents to come eat lunch with their students on a specific day, and the turnout is just outstanding. And it's a few times that junior high students want their parents to come meet with them during the school day. And so, they make a special event and do things like that, and it's well attended, and the parents love it, and the students love it too. On Monday, I had the opportunity to visit Bowie High School, and that's a picture of all the IB students in their science symposium. They were demonstrating their projects and their research that they had done, both with biology and chemistry, and these are junior-level students in the IB program at Bowie High School. Very, very impressive, the findings of their research and things like that, a nice event that Bowie High School was able to put there together. Finally, last but not least, Martin High School teachers Julie Warner and Rhonda Pugh will be honored with the World Affairs Council, Dallas and Fort Worth International Education Program Educators of the Year Award in mid-April. These inspiring teachers were the minds behind the groundbreaking initiative to start the first Junior World Affairs Council in 2004. There are now more than 40 World Affairs Councils in the area schools. It's indeed an honor, and they've worked tremendously hard, year after year, in this World Affairs Council, and congratulations to these two teachers. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Now, we'll move to board reports. Mr. Barron.
Thank you, President Hogg. Earlier this evening, we had a young lady from...
Sam Houston.
Sam Houston.
Yes, sir.
Tremendous, unbelievable story. She spoke of two things, and I wanted to cover briefly those two things, and one was avid. I just can't say enough about how much I love and appreciate the avid program. It does tremendous things for our kids. It doesn't cost us a tremendous amount of money. It's fabulous. I believe that we should become an avid district, and we're certainly heading in that direction. Well, that's my next one, Gloria. You want to do it? She was a dreamer. In my previous life, next door, we had a law school in the high school, and one of the functions of the law school, that the law school took on, was that we spent weekends inviting in dream kids with all their paperwork, and we were screening their paperwork and helped them fill out the forms, and actually put it in the envelope and mail it off for them. And what that did is it saved them $500 each, because that's what the lawyers were going to charge them to do the same paperwork that we were doing for free. Tremendous program. Okay, now, here's what I was doing. I went to Coana's Pancake Breakfast, ended up buying a pile of stuff on that silent auction thing. Okay, my wife did. Financial Futures Monday, like I said, Dr. Works came and did the high-speed presentation for those folks, and it was kind of funny to watch. We were all interviewed by the HEB team. I, too, was at Owlsley Junior High with the superintendent, seeing the hot dog teachers and all that. And a part of that the superintendent didn't talk about was that kids that, whose parents could not be with them, could not bring them lunch, the teachers had, out of their own pockets, bought stacks and stacks of pancakes, not pancakes, pizzas for those kids. It was a great day, so everybody got to eat a real good meal or a real bad meal. I went to the IB thing at Bowie High School, and those IB students, when you looked at the project, I thought, "Well, it's just another science lab project." But when I spoke to the kids and asked them what they had learned, the depth of their knowledge was just remarkable in photosynthesis and what they were learning from the project. It was a combined biology, chemistry, and physics project. They had a person on the team from each of those classes, and it was all integrated, which is what we really want to do with our education. Fabulous program. This evening, just before coming here, I was at the opening of the Reading Oasis at Adams Junior High, no, Adams Elementary, Adams Elementary, and they were doing that, and then they were having open house tonight. And of course, James and Barbara Adams were there because they wouldn't miss a beat at that school. Fabulous time. I remind the governance committee, seven o'clock tomorrow morning. And then we're at Crouch. That's it for me. We might as well just stay here.
Seven AM. Mr. Barron, I'm shadowing my student at Arlington High at 7:35, so I feel you. Ms. Spanja.
You know, it's easy to say what you're going to say when you have a like mind, and I just knew what needed to be said, plus you need to give your wife credit for things. I had the honor of being in two board budget and accountability meetings. One of them occurred, a lot of these are done telephonically, and so we share information electronically, and one of them was done during the time where the schools were closed and we had the ice storms or the snow storms, and the other one was done during spring break. So, we just keep going, no matter whether the schools are open or not, we just keep going. Also attended the Seguin High School Third Annual... Also attended the Seguin High School Third Annual Black History Celebration and gained further knowledge on the history of black Americans and what they've contributed to our society, and that was very interesting. I also attended the, this one was telephonically as well. I'm also on the Board Construction Committee, where we went over all the Workman Junior High information so that we could present it, make sure that the board had all the information they needed. Career Day at Webb Elementary. Arlington, the Sonic Lodge had a meeting to recognize teachers of excellence, and that was a wonderful event to attend. Ironically, one of my old bosses was there from my paying job. And that was interesting to see her there. She got to meet some of the board members so they could meet the lady who could tell me what to do. Ha ha. And then I also attended the Kiwanis Pancake Day fundraiser. And Ben Rhodes, who is an ex-school board member from way, way back, was present, and it was an honor and a privilege to see him again. Jim, John Hibbs, who's not here, so I'll report, he was part of it. We came to the district office and met with the Studer Group, myself and Peter, to go over some information, because we get reports on what information the district is gathering on the surveys and so on, so we'll be well-informed of what's going on. Then I also attended the Bowie High School IB Science Symposium. And the students not only were very articulate in their presentation, very formal, so that you could understand what they were saying. They also gave us the opportunity to see presentations that they did on their iPads, and they asked a lot of questions. There was one student who was more interested in the trustees and what we do as trustees in our role and how we get feedback, and I talked to him about our SLAB group. And he was glad to hear that, and he wanted to know what he could do as a student to get more interaction from the students directly to the board. And so we had quite a conversation, and I kept seeing the principal coming over to try and hear what we were talking about, because we were so engaged that he probably thought, what is going on over there? I also attended the Williams Elementary School, along with, again, with Mr. Barron. We went to visit the chess team. And while we were there, I surprised a fifth-grade teacher who is in her second year of teaching, but I've known her since she was in second grade. And so I went by her school to see how she was doing. I asked if I could see her, and she was so excited. She, I got a great big hug from her. She's just, I'm so proud of her. And then this morning, I went to the Chamber Breakfast, where they had IT information for the workforce readiness, to offer some opportunities to high school and/or GED individuals and for the vets that have come home from war, to get them retrained and reintegrated into the workforce. So it's been a very busy day, and again, tomorrow morning, a lot of us will also be at Crouch Elementary at 8:30 in the morning, reading to the students.
Thank you, Ms. Penya. Dr. Rush.
Thank you, President Hogg. Right after our 7:00 AM conference call. Looking forward to that at 11:17 at night. I just wanted to make mention of a few things. Was it many of the things that were already discussed? I just wanted to touch on a couple of other things. A couple of weeks ago, Webb Elementary had the downtown Rotary there, and it was a really, really neat thing. The Rotary takes care of several schools, Webb being one of their recipients, and because of the scholarships that they're able to provide, they had, I don't remember how many children, but a number of children able to go to camp that would never have been able to. And it was, the children spoke and said their thank yous, but read little letters saying what their experiences was like, and we've got to see lots of different pictures of their experiences, things that they most likely have not ever done and will be lifelong memories. So it's really, really great that we have such good community support and partners like the Rotary to be able to help our children. So I just thought that was neat. When Ms. Penya mentioned IB, that cued my mind that I attended Sam Houston's IB class celebration for turning in their EEs, which is the extended essay for anybody that doesn't know IB stuff. And it's at least a 4,000-word essay, researched, documented effort that takes many, many months, and it's a big, big thing for IB. So it was neat to be there and celebrate with them. And speaking about SLAB, my mentee student is also at Sam Houston. So I had my day at Sam and got to participate in a health class where I almost got 100 on one of the tests. Me, you would think I would have gotten 100, but I know, right? And had a calculus class and an English, yeah, English class. And it was really neat to experience what the teachers and the kids are doing there and just fabulous things going on. But I will say that the teachers, a couple of them said, you need to come more often, because they were really well behaved today. That was kind of funny. And then, Mr. Hogg, you were talking about tomorrow at Arlington High and your SLAB kids. And that made me think of Arlington High's orchestra-winning sweeps, and I thought that was something to note. So that's all I've got in our tired state. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. Ms. Solans.
Yes, and just quickly, because I know it is very late, but I want to give an update from the Governance Committee on the legislative update that we're working on. As you know, working on a tremendous amount of policies and also legislation. Have to thank Ms. Powell and her staff for the tremendous amount of work keeping us informed as we watch legislation. We'll start tomorrow morning, brought in early, our biweekly calls to make sure that we can keep you best informed and have dialogue with our delegation in Austin. Three bills this week oppose SB 14, that's another one-measure-type evaluation. SB 165, that would limit counselors' roles, but doesn't provide the, results in a huge unfunded mandate, because it doesn't say where the other labor would come from. So that's another one. And then SB 893, that would lower minimum salaries for teachers regardless of years of experience. So we have submitted a formal opposition to those bills. We'll keep you updated. Coming up soon, we'll be needing to do some more trips and calls and testimony, so we'll keep you posted from the Governance Committee. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Solans. Ms. Mays.
Okay, I'll try not to repeat some of the events that we've got because of time, but I did enjoy the Third Annual Black History Program at Seguin High School. It was very well done, very professional. The students spoke very well, so it was very enjoyable. Also had an opportunity to read to the third-grade class at Atherton Elementary. That was really a lot of fun. And I actually said, does anybody have any questions? And since I'm not a teacher, I learned that day, you probably don't ask that question if you're not going to stay all day. But one question I was asked, this was the Friday before spring break, and I was asked, how many days are in spring break will we be out of school? And I thought that was a good question, a full week. Also had an opportunity to attend a conference call for our construction work at Workman Junior High, attend an audit subcommittee meeting, and also had an opportunity to attend Junior High Track Meet that was held at Lamar High School. And if I just might say, not biased, because I have boys, but Arlington ISD really does have some very athletic, talented students in this district.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. And Ms. Penya, you've already gone.
This is important. This is really important. And so I want to make this report.
Okay, Ms. Penya.
Okay.
Go.
We had the great opportunity, the entire board. We went three at a time, because we wanted to make sure we were in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, so they couldn't be forced. There was no quorum. But we had a prize patrol, and we went to the homes and/or designated locations to leave invitations with some individuals, because we are naming facilities on March 30. And we want to ensure that the public knows, and they come, to the Fielder Road Church. They have a big auditorium there. We want to recognize and acknowledge these individuals. Now, can I say who the individuals are?
Yes.
Okay. The individuals are Laura and Jimmy Jones, Sandy McNutt, Eddie and Barbara Peach.
Eddie and Debbie.
I'm sorry, Eddie and Debbie Peach. I'm thinking of Barbara Adams. And the fourth one was...
Diane Patrick.
Diane Patrick. I went to that one. I don't know why that didn't come to me. But we're so excited. It's naming facilities. We have the big reveal that night will be what facilities? And so that will, we will vote on it that night at that meeting, because it is a called board meeting. So we want to ensure that everyone comes out to celebrate with us in the naming of those facilities. So please come out. That was very important. It was fun doing it, but that's very important to recognize those individuals.
March 30th meeting's posted, and very clear those are just recommendations.
Yes.
At this moment. So, perfect. Thank you to the board. Thank you all the work. Next, we will go in, before we do that, Secretary, do we have any items to address for these? Okay, thank you. We will take a six-minute break and reconvene at approximately 11:30. We will be back in open session to do an employee-level grievance, so everyone can move. Thank you. It's 11:35, and we'll call this meeting back to order. The Board of Trustees will now hear an appeal of an administrative decision to deny employees' complaint about conditions of work. This complaint is brought by Richard Davis, Robert Camps, Terry Davis, Daniel Vasquez, Keith Maiden, Vincent Martin, Brandon Neal, Tony Rule, and John Terrell. They are appealing an administrative decision at the superintendent's, superintendent's designee made at Level 2. This meeting has been requested in writing by the grievance in accordance with Board policy DGBA local. The portion of these proceedings in which the employees and the administration present their statements will be recorded by audio and videotape. The board's deliberations will not be recorded. I ask that parties identify themselves for the record before speaking, speak clearly to the microphone at the podium to make sure presentations. All parties will main order and decorum. Superintendent has forwarded to the board a copy of the administrative decision at Level 2, along with all exhibits and other materials used at presented at lower-level conferences. No new, excuse me, apologize, no new evidence will be heard at this presentation. I remind the parties that this issue before the board is whether the superintendent's decision at Level 2 should be upheld, reversed, or modified. The board is not the fact-finder, but must rely on the facts and other information presented in the record. The board will listen to the grievance presentation and will make a decision no later than the next regular meeting. Each party will be afforded a total of 10 minutes to present their positions concerning the administrative decisions before the board on appeal. Lisa Benjamin, to my left, will keep time for both parties. If either party exhausts the allotted time before completing his or her presentation, I will call time and permit the person speaking to complete the sentence. No extensions will be permitted unless granted by me, the president. First, please identify yourselves from the grievance presentation statement.
My name is Lonre Fomodjero. I will be representing the individuals who filed the grievance. I'm with Attorney with the United Educators Association, representing them.
Perfect. Thanks, Lonre. And from the administration side?
I'm Carol Simpson. I'm an attorney with AICOBAM Wardell. We represent the administration.
Perfect. Are there any questions of clarification from either side?
Just one point. I'm going to be doing the bulk of the presentation, but I would like to have one of the members to use, you know, within the allotted 10 minutes, say, you know, make a brief statement.
That's perfectly fine. Just please ask them to identify themselves, and it'll still count towards your 10 minutes, Lonre. Okay, thank you. Any questions from administration? Perfect. Lonre, this time, we will start your 10 minutes. Is there any, Ms. Benjamin, can you do, would you like a set, a unique set of identifiers or beeps or?
Just...
The one minute or?
Three minutes, let's say.
The three minute, okay?
Yes.
Thank you, Lonre.
Thank you. As I said, good evening, members of the board. My name is Lonre Fomodjero, attorney with the United Educators Association, representing the employees you see here before you this evening. There are nine employees that are a part of this grievance. One wasn't here, because he had an hour-and-a-half commute between work and homes, but everybody else is here. They are employees in your maintenance, plumbing, and electrical department here at AISD. They filed this grievance because they believe that the recent changes in the salary structure implemented as a result of the TASB salary study resulted in an unfair advantage being given to new hires over current employees. While it's understood that the intent behind the salary survey was to have the district salaries reflect current market values as well as to allow the district greater flexibility in recruiting and retaining new hires, the end result has ended with harm of current employees. Taking a look at a few of the individuals that are a part of this grievance, we're talking about people that have been with the district for seven years, eight years, 10 years, 26 years. So it's, those are long-tenured employees of the district. Most are long-term employees. Essentially, what the district has said to them with this new pay range is that they put a higher priority on getting new hires over acknowledging and rewarding their current employees who have loyally served the district over the years. Don't get me wrong, they greatly appreciate the increases in salaries that they have received as a result of the study. However, when one looks at the breakdown of the numbers, the actual numbers, and the manner in which the district chose to create equity between current employees and new hires, one begins to realize that there really is no equity with the new system in place. We believe that the new hires have a distinct advantage when it comes to their salaries. So the current pay range after the TASB study for manual trades, this group, ranges from $19.04 at a low to $27.40 at the high end, with a midpoint at $23.22. First, the district raised current employees' rate of pay to a minimum range if their current pay was below the range. Then the district adjusted for above-average years of experience. If an employee with more than the average years of experience was below the midpoint of the pay group, they were then granted the years-of-experience adjustment, which equated to 3% of the new grade midpoint. So basically, if they had six or more years of experience within the district, they would get 3% of the new grade, above the new grade midpoint. On the other hand, the district's practice for determining new hire salary is to provide them with 1% pay increase above the minimum of the salary range for each previous year of experience. This is the district's formula for creating equity in salaries between the new hires and current employees. The new hires have the advantage of all of their years of previous experience, counting, whereas current employees are limited to consideration of only years within the district, only their years within the district, counting towards their current salary. Therefore, if an employee who's been with the district for seven years but came here with 10 years of prior experience, in looking at their salary, the district is not going to consider that this individual actually has 17 years of experience in the plumbing department, in the electrical department. They're only going to say, you have seven years, and that's what we're going to base your salary on. For the new hire, the new hire has the advantage of having 17 years, and that counting towards salary increase. As a result, according to the district's own review of the grievance salaries, these grievance salaries, current salaries, the current average salary for this group is only $20.61, and the mode average, or the most common pay rate among this group, is a mere $19.43 per hour, with five of the nine employees at that pay rate. Just to remind you, these are gentlemen with anywhere from 17 to 30 years of relevant job experience in their fields. For five of nine of them currently to only be making $19.43 per hour with that much experience is a travesty. The Level 2 grievance response goes on to further admit that, quote, "The example of an employee new to the district being paid approximately 5% more per hour than those current employees at the rate of pay of $19.43 is accurate." According to my rough calculations, using the district's new hire formula to calculate salaries for the nine members of this grievance would result in an average salary, should result in an average salary of about $24.27 per hour, which would be a figure just above midpoint. But as it stands, the current method of the district's calculating the salaries has most of the group at just 39 cents above base pay. The Level 2 response also admits that some equity compression would occur. It claims that equity compression... It claims that equity, the equity compression would be addressed later on, as soon as the district implemented a pay-for-performance system in the near future, and that would increase range penetration. We disagree with that conclusion. First, we have absolutely no idea when the district does plan to implement or adopt this pay-for-performance system. Secondly, even with the new pay-for-performance system, current inequities in salaries would remain. New hires with the benefit of the 1% per year salary will always have that advantage over current employees, and there's no way for the district to address that inequity in pay between the two groups, except to utilize the same formula to calculate all individual salaries. And I, I'd like to be clear, we're not asking that the district go back to the old step schedule for salaries. What we are asking is that the district level the playing field for all that are involved. I will now step down and allow Mr. Davis to give his brief presentation, and if there's any time left over after his, I would like to reserve that for rebuttal. Thank you.
Thank you, I'm Richard Davis. I want to thank you for letting me speak. I'm a WT-7 electrician, and I've worked for AISD for 10 years with seven years' previous experience. In 2014, I was making $19.19 per hour and was given a salary adjustment of 70 cents, raising me to $19.89. And that was in March. And the first new hire after that time period was a plumber, a WT-7 also, and with seven years of experience, and he was hired making $20.38 an hour. I was never given the chance, the opportunity, to use my years' experience to get the pay that he is. I've worked 17 years, I've got 17 years' experience, and the new hire was only seven years, yet he makes more than I do. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll reserve the rest of our time.
Thank you, Lonre. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Ms. Benjamin, how much time is left?
Two minutes, 70 seconds.
This time, we'll call administration. Would you like a same warning at three minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hogg, trustees, the complainants have the burden of proof that the district violated the law or district policy in choosing a market-based pay system for manual trade employees. The complainants have shown neither. They complain that longer-tenured employees must train new employees who may earn more. But the new employees are not being trained in their skilled trade, they're being trained in AISD procedures. The one employee who's the center of this grievance has seven years of experience in comparable work, plus he has a master plumber license. He doesn't need to be schooled in his trade. This procedure is no different from a principal coming into a building, and a longtime assistant principal explains the building procedures in history. The new principal may be higher-paid, but the assistant principal has important corporate memory to share. The assistant principal is not teaching the principal how to be a principal, he's only providing the background to enable him to do that. This grievance, despite what they may tell you, is a request for a step payment. AISD made a conscious decision to choose market-based pay. Assistant Superintendent Scott Cale would like to explain why and how.
Good evening. My name is Scott Cale. I am the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Good evening, President Hogg and members of the Board. I guess I'd like to start by pointing out that treating people fairly and consistently within the district is one of the most important things, if not the most important thing we can do. And that's particularly the case when it comes to compensation. Compensation's personal, it's a big deal. And when you look at compensation systems, particularly in the context of this grievance, there are two distinctly different elements. There's compensation for current employees, and how we treat that, and how we handle it, and what we do. And there's compensation practices for how we hire people. And the common element that drives our guiding principle consistency or continuity between those two, despite the fact that they are different, and they do address different objectives, is a guiding principle of relevant job experience. Relevant job experience is used when hiring for new hires coming in the door with a 1% differential, that 1% is intended to be based on years of experience. Relevant job experience was used for employees that are currently here with regard to the TASB market study, although it was used in the context of identifying equity increases within employees rather than new hires coming in the door. This grievance is really about one new hire in 2014 who had seven years of experience and a master plumber certification or license. Compared to the plumber population, that individual came in seven out of 12, if you rank order, if you rank order their individual hourly rates. He actually shows at 48 cents above Mr. Davis, who's filed the grievance, who's an electrician in the same grade level but in a different job function. Effectively, the outcome there was a minimal difference in pay while successfully attracting a candidate qualified for hire, again at a difference of 48 cents an hour. Of the four plumbers with lower pay rates, at his point of hire, their average tenure with AISD, as mentioned earlier, although this is an average of that, of those four, is seven years with a collective pay increase of approximately 25% for that group over that seven-year period. It is important for us to continue to qual, excuse me, to offer salary growth and advancement opportunities to our employees, as has been done with those four over the last seven years, at an average of about 25%. The issue of being concerned about training of qualified, or being, training someone who has more experience, or being the person who's doing the training who has less experience or less pay, is in fact relevant to the point that was made just a moment ago, which is the training that occurred didn't have to do with content knowledge of being a plumber. The training had to do with adaptation to the work environment. We're talking about a master plumber with seven years of experience. Our processes have worked well in parallel to address internal equity for current employees and competitive pay for new hires. Employees hired after the TASB study adjustments of March 2014 were not eligible for that increase. Their experience was calculated into their offer. Employees hired prior to the implementation of the 1% differential for external hires were not eligible for the TASB study adjustments. In fact, employees were eligible for one or the other, not both. Common variables are equ, within both of those groups have to do with market pay and relevant job experience. We believe both our internal equity adjustments and our external hiring processes have been complied consistently with the intention of treating both groups fairly. And we continue to assess our market pay annually and recommend salary range movement as needed, and in fact, we're doing that right now as an annual process, and recommend the outcomes from those studies accordingly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cale. And Ms. Benjamin, how much time has?
Four minutes, five seconds.
Okay, perfect. Four minutes, five seconds. Lonre, and, hold on just a second, so we have the clock ready? Okay. Ms. Benjamin, if you confirm, we show we have 2:07 left?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Karate head?
Thank you. To, this grievance is definitely not about training. We understand that individuals new to the district need to be trained on procedures of the district, so that's not what this grievance is about. Two of the first words that I heard from Mr. Cale's mouth were fair, fairness, and consistency. And he's indicating that there's fairness and consistency within the two groups, but these are two groups that work within the one under the umbrella of AISD. And it's not fair when you have one group fair and consistent, fair and consistent over here, but they're all within the same manual trades department, and it's not fair for them to be placed up here with their salaries, and then you have current employees down here. This is not the only example. We're talking about the whole manual trades department. There are a lot more individuals that would have been here had a memo not been sent out to the individuals and to the supervisors in these departments discouraging discussions about salary. So there would be more than nine individuals here this evening, but they felt that there might be some retaliation, retaliation if they showed their face and let you people know that they were, they were, they supported the individuals and they supported the goal of this grievance and having their salaries revised. So when, when Mr. Cale mentions, we're just talking about one individual, master plumber, he's not, not a master plumber, he just received his, his license, is my understanding. His experience is definitely not comparable to the individuals that are currently with the district. And for the district to reward and not recognize that, you know, for the district to not recognize the current employees that they have and reward that by increasing their salaries and basing that on the same scale simply doesn't make sense to me. And I'll reserve.
Okay, thank you, Lonre. How much time is left?
Three seconds.
You have three seconds left, Lonre.
I know. I'll try.
Four minutes and five seconds left.
Thank you. The administration believes that this market-based survey based on TASB data is fair and equitable to all concerned. The current employees have been, have been considered, and their, their salaries have been adjusted within the, the range that TASB identified for employees within that, that group. They are distributed within that group based on their years of experience. Those who had the most experience that did not come up to the midpoint of that range were brought up at least to the midpoint of that range, which gives them an opportunity for growth as we move into a performance-based system. Again, the burden on the complaintant is to show that the district has violated some law or policy, and there is no law or policy that the district has violated here. The district has the authority to set these salary schedules and assign people on those, those bases, bases, sorry, and has done so. Thank you.
Three seconds, I may give you a little more if you have one final, final statement.
Thank you. I just have one question.
Three seconds, no.
Mr. Davis, who has seven years of experience, is not making the midpoint, and according to the district's formula, he should be making at least $23.22. He's making $19.40, 89 cents. That's not even at midpoint, and according to the district's formula, he should be at least at or above midpoint now.
Thank you, Lonre. Yeah, they've got a minute thirty. Administration, a minute thirty left, if there's anything else to add? At this time, we will, we'll entertain any board questions for clarification on the facts that are presented. Ms. Pena.
This question would go probably to you, Scott. If these employees, and I'm not suggesting this, if these employees should quit today and come back and apply for the job, would they be compensated the same as they are now?
My expectation is it would be very close to what they're at today, because the thing, the elements that go into making a offer decision include equity, and the equity of the members of the group are already fairly close. I don't anticipate if one or two left and came back that that equity, equity would be much different, and that would influence that decision. So it would probably be very close to where they're at now.
Thank you, Ms. Pena. Any other, Ms. Mays?
Scott, this is probably a question also for you. Being a master plumber or having a certification, does that become part of being able to be paid more? From what, my understanding, from what I heard, it was to get the increase would be based on years of experience.
It's not a hard part of any formula. It is what I would call a soft consideration when you're trying to determine the equity factor.
Okay.
Any other clarification points from board members? Any others? Okay. I'll now declare this complaint, appeal closed. If there's no objection, the Board will deliberate in private with its attorney. Any objections? The Board will now go into executive session. Please stay close. If we have a resolution tonight, we will tell you as promptly as possible. If we're going to go and extend it to the next meeting, we will also tell you that. We will try and expedite our decision this evening one way or the other. Perfect. Okay, thank you, guys. It is 12:25 a.m., the morning of the 20th. Apologize for the late night tonight. We will be back into open session at this time, would entertain a motion.
President Hogg, I'd like to make a motion. I move to uphold the administration and request the following. One, if UEA has a copy of the letter they described as threatening retaliation, provide the Board President a copy tomorrow. Two, if the administration knows of a letter described by UEA, present it to the Board President by tomorrow. And three, we request the administration review its communication plan regarding all compensation and benefits and report back with recommended changes if any. Thank you.
We have a motion, and I will second it. So we have a motion by Ms. Solins and a second by myself. Any further discussion from board members? At this time, please vote. Six trustees, present six trustees voting in affirmative to uphold the motion and request of three items from administration and from UEA. Thank you. It's 12:26. We are not going into closed session. We are adjourned.